For Monday, September 6, 2016, I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor McLean.
Mayor Given, I'll move the minutes to the City Council Meeting held Monday, August 22, 2016 be approved.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? If everything looks like it's in order, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. I think that's all of our votes for tonight. And I thought I hit the display votes. We'll just redo that. Council, please vote. Oh, that's gonna be fun. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Worked that time? Okay, thank you. That motion carries. I hope that's not a signal of how the rest of the meeting's gonna go. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Rice.
Oh, Council, adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to address council on any community-related matter, as long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing. And I would note that we have two public hearings on our agenda tonight, so as long as you're not here with respect to one of those, we certainly would welcome anybody who wished to come forward. We didn't have any delegations let us know in advance that they wished to come, but if anybody wanted to come forward and address council, now would be the opportunity. I would just ask any delegations that come if they can keep their presentations for about to about five minutes, and then we would ask, have some opportunity for council to ask any questions. Is there anybody that wished to come forward to present to council tonight? There won't be an opportunity later on in the agenda, so if there's anybody that wished to come forward, sure, come on down. It's kinda like The Price is Right. You just come. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Come on down, have a seat at the tables. The mics are okay, as long as they're pointed sort of towards you and a little bit closer, maybe, than they are. And if you'd just give us your name for our recording secretary. Welcome.
My name's Dave Merrick.
Welcome.
So I've been a member of the Grand Prairie community for about 10 years, and the past four years, I have been volunteering my time teaching young kids skiing, race skiing, for the Nighthawk Alpine Ski Team. And for the last two years, I've also acted as president of the ski club. The past six months, I've been volunteering my time in between ski seasons for the Bear Creek Folk Festival. And I ended up taking on the lead role of artist hospitality as a team lead. So what did this folk fest that we just had mean to me as a member of this community? I got to see Grand Prairie in a new light that I've never seen Grand Prairie before. I got to talk to lots of people from out of town. People, whether they were artists, I got to talk to volunteers, and I got to talk to people that just attended the event. And a lot of things were, there were a lot of comments that kept coming up and up, and one of the comments that I frequently heard was how friendly Grand Prairie was and the vibe that our community instilled at the festival. And this vibe, you can't really explain. It's a vibe that if you were present at the festival, you know what I'm talking about. And this isn't a vibe that as a volunteer, like, I can try to plan for or create it. It's just something that happens, and it was something that was very special, and it was something that really made me proud to be a member of Grand Prairie. As a father, I have a wife and two kids, age nine-years-old, and I'm constantly trying to teach them about arts and about music culture. And what a better way than to take them to a folk festival to show them the diversity of music. Normally, I have to jump into an airplane with my family and travel great distances to take them to events like we had in Grand Prairie. And it was so nice to have something right in my backyard. And I personally also want to thank the fact that you guys allowed kids to be free at the folk festival. Now, speaking about family, I also got to be introduced to a new family, and that's my folk fest family. And there's a whole bunch of them sitting right behind me. Over the six months, I met, it's always a challenge in any community to meet new friends that share the same values as you and the same interests as you. And in the past six months, being part of the folk fest, I have met more people than I could imaginably thought of that I would be looking forward to seeing on a year-to-year basis. And the people behind me, I look forward to seeing on a monthly basis. And I just wanted to say that I can't wait for next year to see the second annual folk fest.
Thanks, Mr. Merrick. Oh, don't leave it just yet. We always want to ensure that if there's any questions for our delegation, the council has an opportunity to do that. And so I see Councillor McLean has a question.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Given. Dave, just a quick question. I wasn't here, I was on vacation a time across the country, and I heard all the elements worked for this folk festival this time for weather. I heard it was very sunny, Dean Rain, Anyas. It was very sunny for the occasion. Is that true?
Oh, yeah. I mean, the whole summer I was worried, because all we had was rain, and I'm thinking, the gods are gonna shine this weekend, it just has to happen. Because, you know, we were hoping for a lot of walk-up traffic, and we got a lot of walk-up traffic, because Grand Prairie's known to be a last-minute, minute sort of decide what to do on the weekend. And the weather couldn't have been better. I mean, it was just fantastic.
Thank you.
Questions for the delegation? Okay, I don't see anybody ringing in, so you're off the hot seat. Thanks very much, Mr. Merrick. Was there anybody else that wished to come forward and address council? Does anybody else wish to come forward? I see people are trying to draw straws back there to decide who is gonna go next, so. Counselor Logan says we bite. Don't get, don't get close to Counselor Logan. Welcome. And again, just if you can state your name for our recording secretaries, everybody's aware.
So my name's Cooper Morrison. I've been a resident of Grand Prairie for about eight years. Prior to that, I lived in, in and around Grand Prairie, but my whole life I've been in this area. So I just have a little bit of something written up. So, good evening, council. I'm a small business owner here in Grand Prairie. I've owned and operated my food truck, Highland Hot Dogs, for the past about three years. In that time, I've proudly served with my business at pretty much every single summer festival, event, holiday, et cetera. From Bud Country, Canada Day, the Highland Games, Drag Wars, Street Performers, East Coast Garden Party, to name a few. In the years prior to this one, I've made both a very good profit and been able to expand or double my business every single year. With the recent decline in the economy, however, my business has suffered significantly. Crowds at events both appear to be thinner, and so do my profits. Two weeks prior to the folk fest, I attended the Wembley Mayhem, which was an event that was anticipated to be a great success, in much the same way that folk fest had talked about. At that event, I was there for two days, and I sold about $20 worth of product. The day after I finished Wembley Mayhem, I attended Heritage Day in Musquesee Park. That is an event that has every single year been one of my best events. I don't think there's a single year that I haven't made at least $5,000 at that event. And this year, I made about $200. I came out of that weekend with about $8,000 in debt. And I was really scared that folk fest was going to be a repeat. You can ask pretty much any of the organizers. I was, I was not a confident person going into that. I was very worried that it would completely destroy my company to have a second weekend in a row that would be another $6,000. I was very pleasantly surprised, though. By about mid-afternoon on the second day of the festival, I had broken sales records that I had made from entire weekends in previous years. And by the third day, I doubled that. At the end of folk fest, I had no debt left. I've paid off all of my company's debt, and it is entirely because of the folk fest. I would not have been able to recover my loss had it not been for this event. Bear Creek Folk Fest wasn't just good for my business, it saved my business. There is no doubt in my mind that Bear Creek Folk Fest prevented me from having to permanently close up shop. Words fail to express my support for the Bear Creek Folk Fest. I wholeheartedly believe that this festival's continued existence is both good for business in Grand Prairie and good for this city's reputation as a whole. That's about all I have to say to you guys.
Thanks very much, Mr. Morrison. Absolutely. Any questions for Mr. Morrison? I just had one, Mr. Morrison. So you're a local business. Where do you get your product from?
Majority of my product, Mr. Mayor, is ordered through, I have a couple of meat suppliers that are local, but most of it comes from outside of town. Everything for my buns, my propane, my, pretty much everything that I require to operate is purchased either at local businesses or at businesses that are in the county.
We don't mind that part.
During, during that week, of course, of course. During that weekend, I, because I was selling so much, more than I expected, I cleaned out the, both Safeways, both IGAs, and Costco of all of my product that I sell. Bought every single piece of product that they had that I could. And I still wasn't able to keep up.
Thank you. Any other questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thanks very much for coming. Is there anybody else that wished to present to council? Oh, this is somebody that knows the drill. You've been here before.
Oh, I have been, and I've always been.
You still have to, you still have to introduce yourself, though.
I do, okay. So I'm Mika Degroot, and I came to the folk fest just as somebody who knows something about working with people who have low mobility. And I need to say, I was extremely pleased with the way mobility issues were dealt with at the park. The city is a good part of that, but they had a fantastic proportion of porta-potties, which is incredibly important when you can't get in there. And, you know, there's, the thoughts, the comments about, can we have a boardwalk next time from the low-mobility parking space, which was a, a please, if you don't mind, let people with low mobility park at the pavilion, so that they don't have to climb that frickin' hill. Right? And then they're saying, well, why can't we have some kind of way to help walkers and wheelchairs and scooters and strollers get to the different venues? Like, the people are getting involved in this. And this year, we thought, well, we won't make it possible yet for people with specialized equipment to volunteer, because we don't know how close tarps are gonna get. We don't know if there's going to be problems that are gonna make it impossible for someone to do what they need to do. And already, I'm hearing some fantastic ideas. So that family who was bringing water around to all the different artists and musicians and stuff, they figured out how somebody that they love dearly, who bowls with me every week, can be pulling that water wagon. So we're already figuring out, how can people who otherwise don't get to be part of this, be part of this, and be really full participants in our community of Grand Prairie? And thank you for making that happen.
Well, you, you heard, there's always, you never know, you never know what's gonna raise a question with council.
I'll answer all the questions.
I know, you just tried to bash out of there. Any questions for Mr. Degroot? Okay. I'll see, I ask, and then council doesn't ask any questions, but thanks very much, Mika, for being here tonight. Any other, somebody else that we recognize? Once again, you've heard the, heard the routine, you know the routine. Please introduce yourself for our recording secretary and for the, for the public watching online.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Ainsley Lamontaine. I'm the executive director of Grand Prairie Regional Tourism. So I'm always coming forward to speak on tourism's behalf, especially for the festivals and events. This has been a significant year for them. I wanted to speak specifically to the Bear Creek Folk Festival. We have been doing surveying at nearly every festival and event this year, and we've really tried to get a good understanding of both the visitors and the residents. One, because we want to understand what residents know. Are they acting as good hosts? Are they acting as ambassadors for the region? What do they know? And the other part is the visitors. Where are they coming from? How long are they staying? And are we reaching them in the right ways? So I did give a letter of support, I know that went to committee, but I just wanted to speak to the number of visitors that were at the Bear Creek Folk Festival in comparison to the other festivals and events that we surveyed. This was significantly higher for visitors. So the difference between a visitor's spend and a resident's spend at a festival is they stay overnight, they must pay for gas to leave town again, they have to purchase their food. The highest spend is if they're in a hotel, the secondary spend is if they're in a campground, but they're still paying more money to be here, injecting directly into the local economy. So I know you've probably read the letter of support for Bear Creek Folk Festival, but does anyone have any questions?
See, at least, Councillor Rice.
So did you survey at the Street Performers Festival?
I personally didn't. I had four of the staff doing it.
So you have numbers from there?
I do have numbers for there. And we got way more surveys at Bear Creek Folk Festival than we did at the Street Performers, though. So my comparison is on a larger scale at that festival than it was at Street Performers. One of the reasons being that we also did paper surveys at Bear Creek, was we only did the electronic surveys up to then.
Okay, so it's not really a fair comparison.
You can still make the comparison, but the number of people that are at the Street Performers Festival that answered our surveys were, by and large, residents and not visitors.
What about the stomped?
We didn't survey the stomped, we didn't get our funding until after the stomped was completed. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Clayton.
Can you tell me, was a STEAM analysis done? Maybe explain for those in council who don't know what STEAM analysis is, but was a STEAM analysis done on this event?
Just turn your microphone so it's pointing towards you, Councillor Clayton, for next time. So the question was around a STEAM analysis, if you can explain what that is and whether or not it was done.
So a STEAM analysis is a sports tourism economic impact model, and the Sports Tourism Council does have that. It is expensive to run, especially if you're doing it and you want specific information. We did not run a STEAM analysis for this. We also have another economic impact model called a DEEM. We did not run that for this either. The surveying that we were doing, we actually have provincial funds to run this survey, and we're doing comparisons between Chinook Country Tourism and Lethbridge and Grand Prairie Region. So the survey's questions are very similar to the modeling, but we were looking at the entire region over the entire high season, so it wasn't specific to an event. We can break it down to smaller events, basically, by time, so that we can see more information. But your magic number is 400 surveys. So no matter whether it's a STEAM model or any survey, you wanna hit 400, that's the magic number. And we got 800 over the season, so it's hard to make a good comparison just for Bear Creek Folk Festival from the information that we got on the surveys.
Sorry, can I have another one? Thanks, Mayor Given. Can you tell me, Ainsley, the statistical data you collected, I understand some of it was possibly through the ticket vendor, some was at the gate. Tell me sort of the numbers, how they varied, and, and the ticket numbers that were pre-purchased, what those look in regards to tourism numbers compared to the local sort of data collection.
So I can only answer specifically to our surveys, just because that I had complete control over, the staff were trained for it, that's what we were all there specifically to do. But you can also get information from Second Street Theater, who pre-sold the tickets, that was the online ticket sales. And I'm pretty sure that their numbers, and it's just from the top of my head, but theirs were a 40% out-of-town visitor rate, but that would be a comparison.
And so what did, I think the Councillor Clayton's question was, what did your numbers show in tourism's?
So they're consistent?
Councillor Radver.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Ainsley, good evening. My question is, are you aware, at the delegation, that committee spoke of a, that there could be potential access to a grant? I think it was provincially, I can be stand corrected, based upon after a festival has become break-even. So are you aware of that, that grant program?
I did a little research, because I'd heard reference to that as well, and I'm gonna let probably Sarah speak to that. But there is a federal grant, that is a community, growing communities, and it's specific to local, growing local tourism. If you're using local performers, you can access that fund for festivals, and it can be up to 100%, but the numbers were between 2,000 and 20,000, but generally, they were $6,000. They're not in the comparison of 100,000 or a million dollars. There's also federal funding for next year to do with the 150th of Canada. I understand that the larger grants have now closed, and it's only the smaller funds that you can access, so up to $10,000 on that. There is provincial funding through the arts, but as to the different comparisons of those grants, I'm gonna let Sarah speak to that. She's been doing a lot of background.
Thanks, Councillor Radver. And Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Ainsley, just a quick question. I was fortunate enough to volunteer at the East Coast Garden Party, it was their ninth year, and I was there the whole weekend, and I didn't see anybody who tours them with any surveys there whatsoever. You didn't do that one either. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Rice.
Ainsley, now, I'm kind of weak on this, but it seems to me that surveying for sports tourism would be far easier because we do have a, a policy or something, and we don't have one for the arts. So would that not make the sports tourism surveys much more accurate or definitive?
I'm gonna say no, just because the STEAM modeling is very well-defined and very well-known, and you can pay for different levels that you asked for. So if you want, basically, the STEAM modeling to come in, they will do every intercept survey, they will contact every property, I mean, that's a high price tag. If you're doing intercept surveying yourself, then you need the volunteers to be asking the right questions and to be using, let's say, the correct intonation, so that they're not sending somebody to a different answer. And you need to have them out there doing the survey. Whether they're doing an economic impact model for tourism or for sports, the validity of the numbers is still there, but the price tag as to what level you want to have that economic impact modeling done is different. The city does have a policy on sports tourism, but in terms of festival tourism and event tourism, it's not there.
And that's one more question? This might be a little off-topic, but the big bike, the big bike went around with surveys, did it not?
Our tricycle.
Yeah. And did it, did it enable you, did it attract enough attention that you were able to contact more people?
The tricycle was great. It was also a Wi-Fi hotspot, so people could come up to us and, and use our Wi-Fi for a short period of time, especially when we're out somewhere, like at Bear Creek, when we're on the hill and the city's Wi-Fi isn't there. So the Wi-Fi and the tricycle draw people in. My problem with the surveying that I found this summer was basically that using an iPad mini, if it's a really bright day, it's hard to read, and so it takes longer, and you're only one by one. So it's one person you're surveying at a time. When you're doing the paper surveying, there's more surveys we have to discard because they're not complete, but we had six clipboards set up in two different locations, so we were getting a lot more information a lot faster.
Thank you. Councillor Clayton.
Given, just something that you touched on earlier, Ainsley, can you tell me, you said that some information was collected through Second Street and some was through yourself. You were quoted in the Daily Herald Tribune recently in saying there was about economic spin-off that came from Bear Creek. Can you verify me if those numbers are accurate, based on you're not really doing an economic analysis on this?
I was mis, I wasn't misquoted, but I did not do an economic impact model for Bear Creek Folk Festival, and I did follow up with them afterwards, and apparently the information didn't get out correctly. But what they have done is they've taken the numbers that, that came from us and from Second Street Theater, from the ticket sales, and they've created a calculation based on visitors coming from out of town, how much it would cost for an overnight stay, how much they have to spend.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have one question, Ms. Lamontaine. In terms of scale, what are comparable events in terms of draw for visitors from outside of the region? What other ones do we have that are happening?
All of our events are drawing from outside of the region. But you can look at this two ways. You can look at it one way that residents of Grand Prairie were waiting to see what was actually going to happen and what the festival was going to look like before they engaged more fully. Or you can look at it that people from outside of town that already know the folk festival vibe and atmosphere that was spoken of earlier, they went out of their way to go a really long way to hear the number of performers that were part of this festival. So I haven't surveyed the stomped, but they do have a circuit, just the same as many other rodeos and Western heritage events do, and that one's 98 years coming up. So the numbers in comparison, stomped is a longer event, but the rodeo would have to be the next one that has the largest draw from outside the region.
The next one or the close, I'm not asking you to make a, are you making a one-two determination? Or are you saying that they're relatively, like, just trying to get, I really am trying to get a sense of scale, how it compares to other events.
First of all, I think they were going to cap their numbers at 8,000, where stomped saves, you know, 12,000 to 15,000 through the gates, but it also has all of those years of history behind it. When they're at 8,000, then that would be the next one in comparison.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Rice.
Just to clarify, sorry, we're kind of putting you on the hot spot here after we said five minutes. Just clarify region for me. When you say GP Live Theater said 40% of the ticket sales came from outside, is Sex Smith outside, is Beaver Lodge outside, or do you mean outside the region?
And that I don't know for Second Street Theater. For us, it's outside of, if you live or work in the city and county, whether that's Sex Smith or even Beaver Lodge, we still count you as inside the region. If you're from Grand Cash, then you're outside of the region, because you came in, you probably spent an overnight.
I don't see anybody else in the queue, and don't worry about the time. That was actually council-directed time. I think that was us that were in charge of how long that one went. Thanks very much, Ms. Lamontaine, for being here tonight. Is there anybody else that wishes to come forward? Anybody else that wishes to come forward? Okay. Please, come on down and introduce yourself, or council. You're welcome. Nope, I see that you have some... Nope, I see that you have some. See, there's some handouts being given around, so if you'll just introduce yourselves and your team.
Sure. My name's Gordy Hackstead and I'm the president of the board of the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival Society.
And I'm Sarah Carden, I'm the producer for the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival.
And then handing out the papers is Laura Bochop, who is our volunteer coordinator and she also is on the board with us.
So I suspect you, uh, may have more, from the thickness of the document you presented out, you may have, uh, more information that you wish to present tonight than the previous presenters. Um, but I'd ask you to, at the five-minute sort of point, I'm gonna check in and so if you can be as concise as possible in guiding council through what you've.
Yeah, and really I'll let the document kind of guide what I was gonna, uh, explain. So first and foremost, um, there were many successes of the Bear Creek Folk Fest. Um, as Dave Merrick was talking about, if anyone was on site, they felt the vibe. That was just overwhelmingly positive, um, very positive for Grand Prairie, uh, as far as, um, something for the community to be very proud about. Um, but the successes also translated to the numbers of attendees, um, the numbers of attendees from out of town. Um, as Ainsley was reporting, we had three sources. Um, she mentioned two, but we had a third source polling entrance and that was our own volunteers. Um, they reported about a forty percent out of town rate as well to our visitors. And that was, uh, confirmed with, um, GP Tourism's numbers as well as the numbers from our box office. And the box office are really the numbers that we're really holding to because they were, they had a very low percentage of error because those were based on the people actually purchasing the passes. Um, and they showed it was a forty-six percent on Friday, forty-two percent on Saturday, and thirty-four percent from out of the region on Sunday. And we attribute the, the change to word of mouth, basically more local residents coming. Because most of the out-of-towners, um, stayed for the whole weekend as opposed to, um, locals who probably have the ability to come to a Friday or a Sunday, um, easier than if someone's coming for the whole weekend, they're gonna come every day to the weekend. So the decline in percentage is actually because we had more locals, um, coming on Sunday, whereas the number of out-of-towners probably stayed consistent. And we, we estimate the number of out-of-towners to be between sixteen hundred and two thousand. Um, to speak about the, the million dollar in revenue, um, as Ainsley was saying, we used the calculation. Basically, um, I searched, uh, multiple sources of what is the average daily spend of, uh, of a tourist in, in Canada? And on the low end for someone camping, it was fifty dollars a night per person, uh, sorry, per person per day. And on the, the mid-range end, so those people staying in a hotel, was about a hundred twenty-eight dollars, the average being ninety-three dollars. And we saw about fifty percent people camping or staying with friends and about fifty percent staying in hotels. So using the approximate of about ninety-three dollars per day for the actual, um, calculation, plus the amount that the festival spent directly to local businesses, which was, um, two hundred and twenty-five thou, I mean, yeah, two hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, um, to local businesses specifically. Um, so on the first page, you can see a few quotes from, from attendees, from volunteers. There's another page later on in the packet with additional quotes. They're wonderful to read. I won't take the time to read them right now, but, um, the, the gist was that the festival was great. It was on the scale and quality of events that are ten years old. Um, and in the industry, the talk in the industry is that Alberta now has three major festivals, Edmonton, Calgary, and now Grand Prairie. And that was due to the lineup. And the lineup is at the top of the first page. Some of those names you might not recognize, some of them you might. Um, but the wonderful thing about a festival is you come for the names you know and you get to discover the names you don't. And eventually people will buy tickets based on your ability, ability to curate quality musicians, regardless if they recognize the names. And we saw that this year from the out-of-towners. The out-of-towners supported the festival because they recognized a few names and fell in love with the rest. Local Grand Praireans, I believe, discovered what a folk fest was by the end of the last day. And it's, uh, we hope, our, our goal is that they will eventually start buying tickets based solely on the fact that they know it's gonna be a wonderful event. Um, so moving on to, uh, the volunteer community at the bottom, you'll see that we had five hundred thirteen volunteers. Um, over the three days of the festival, we amassed about eight thousand volunteer hours, which is a pretty significant number. Um, it's a number that we didn't put into the actual budget as far as offset labor that we would have had to pay for. Um, but the total number of hours put into it was eleven thousand eight hundred roughly. Um, if you go to the next page, page two, this is probably the one that is gonna have the most questions, is the budget. Um, the budget, uh, the Facebook post that, uh, Mayor Given put up, I'm sure most of you have read or at least perused. Um, one of the things about the budget is we were actually pretty close to our cash budget, um, in our forecast to what the actual was. There was only about a one percent deviation in the cash amount. The, the budget was larger, um, in the gift and kind amounts. So the festival did get, did grow in scale from our original plan. Um, but those were offset by the amount of gift and kind we were able to procure by the local community and some from outside of the community. Um, so it's, the budget's broken down into the, into three kind of standard categories of forecast, actual, and revenue. Uh, gift and kind is included in the forecast and the actual as both costs. And then it's, um, reported again in the revenue. Uh, one thing to speak about on the budget is the scope of the event. And this is me speaking from my experience in the entertainment world from the filmmaking side. Um, certain events, and in the world of film, certain films require a certain cost. And that's because people come for the names. They, they come to movies because of the name in it. They don't come to it because of the, of the story, um, on, on first glance. They come because they know Meryl Streep's in it. Um, similar with this type of event. To draw the out, the outside world, we needed to have names. Those names cost money. I mean, the budget is on a scale that might seem large, but for the names that we had, the quality and scope of the event to have four stages, um, all of those things allowed the successes that we were able to see. Um, reducing the number of stages doesn't actually save a lot of money. Reducing the number of days doesn't actually save a lot of money because a lot of the money goes into the actual setup and the tear down and then the facilities themselves. The length of the event is a marginal change to the budget.
So I'll just give you a heads up to focus on that.
Yeah, we're on the last page. So last page, um, just to kind of, uh, show some of the monies that was within the town. Um, Grand Prairie, local businesses received two hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars directly from the festival. We received, um, cash sponsorship in town of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred. The city was generous in giving us, uh, ten thousand. And from out of town, we actually received forty-five thousand dollars in cash. Uh, gift and kind, the local community was fantastic and donated about two hundred forty thousand dollars worth of, in gift and kind services. Um, uh, one thing we, we do wanna speak to, and it was something that Counselor Radburn brought up about the, the AFA grant, um, which is the fifty thousand dollar funding. Um, that's a grant that we've been in talks with AFA and there might be a different way that they actually have us apply for it. So, um, the, the original statement of this money leading directly to that grant might change. Um, so that's something that we just wanted to put out there right away. Um, uh, last thing that I just kind of wanna wrap up with is we know this is a, 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 a big ask for the city. Um, and we would also ask the city if they so choose that they could appoint a representative or an advisor to our society so that the city can have a direct link to what's going on and actually give us feedback of, of potential, um, uh, potential advice that, that might be most beneficial to the city. So wanted to bring that up as well.
Uh, okay, thank you very much. Any, uh, questions to the delegation? Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mary Given. I guess Gord, I got a couple of questions. Uh, you were saying about four stages because I wasn't here, I have no idea. Um, were the stages locally or where did they come from, the stages?
So the stages themselves, the tents themselves were from Edmonton Folk Festival, they donated those. The staging.
Uh, our main stage, uh, the stage line was also donated by the, the Edmonton Folk Fest came on board as a major sponsor and supplied a lot of the major items that we needed at no cost to our festival. Um, they also went, um, above and beyond and sponsored our festival. They were our number one biggest sponsor. The only, um, item in terms of the staging that we actually spent money on, uh, was the, were the daytime stages. And that was a very, uh, like the tents and everything were covered, but the daytime stages themselves we spent money on. It was a very nominal amount. Uh, we were not able to get the type of stages we needed here, so those were brought in.
We did have to build scaffolding for the, for the speakers and whatnot, and that was a local scaffolding company.
And another question, thank you, Mary Given. Um, I can remember it was eight or ten months ago, I think, or I think you were here too, I'm sorry, I think you guys were here. And I asked, at that time you had a, a budget of five hundred thousand dollars. That was your budget. So I said, what's gonna happen? Because I thought five hundred thousand was quite a bit of money. What would happen if you didn't break even or make money? And there was no questions asked there. So why was your budget doubled in eight, nine months?
Uh, I, I would say the number one thing is, once, once we as a society decided the type of event we wanted to put on and we were able to secure names like Katie Lang, um, and Bruce Coburn, that the size of event had to scale to that. If we put on, oh, and Sarah's vision has changed over the two years. It started as a, a small festival in the courtyard of GPRC. So back then it was a much, much, much different event. Um, we, we probably could have put on a very good local-only festival, but we made the decision, um, soon after, uh, I, I, I don't.
It was, it was at the point where it became possible for us to have the big headliners, that we decided that this was the type of event we wanted to present and that we were really gonna try to go far beyond the local level. Originally, when I first, uh, started planning this festival, I didn't forecast drawing in tourists south of White Court. Uh, we drew in a phenomenal amount of tourists from Edmonton and Calgary. Actually, I'm gonna say the lion's share of our out-of-town visitors were from Edmonton and Calgary. And those are both cities that have their own festival that chose to come to our festival instead. You have to put on a really special type of event to do that. Um, and at, at that point, that was when the budget went up. It's also worth noting that, um, the, the scale of our budget in the folk festival world, and folk festivals are notably different from other types of festivals that we have around here. Um, the, the scale of the budget is, is bigger. The Edmonton Folk Fest costs four point five, uh, four and a half million dollars to put on. Um, our festival is, is likely to grow to be one-third the size of their festival, uh, without necessarily spending as much as their festival. So our, our budget is actually very on par. And in talking with the, uh, artistic directors of many of the other Canadian folk festivals such as Salmon Arm, who is a similar size to us, our budget is very comparable. Like, the budget we have now is very comparable with theirs. So it's, you know, it's, it's an animal that can't be compared with other local events, but it's, it's not, um, you know, when put in comparison to other similar events, it's not a budget that steps outside of the norm.
One, one, it's, oh, sorry.
My final question, thanks Bill, is, uh, so the board itself decided to gamble double the budget, you know, since the last time you were in front of council. Your, your board decided that, right? Yes, there must be motions to that?
So, uh, oh, sorry. Um, the, yeah, this, this is, this, the society, once we saw the level of, of scale that would actually have an impact to draw people from out of town and put us on the map in terms of festivals, um, we decided to go for it. The budget itself did not expand after that. It, it didn't grow in costs and whatnot. Um, where we, where, where it missed was we didn't get enough people in terms of revenue. And we figured about three hundred fifty people per day more, um, which would be, uh, Grand Prairie residents primarily, would have brought us to the level that we needed to. And as we saw Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, more local residents kind of get the proof of concept, that's when we saw, um, that, that's, as the word was getting out. Now, when we realized that there was going to be a shortfall, um, we saw that coming. We immediately started reaching out to other ways to try to either generate more ticket sales or actually generate more investments. And we were able to secure, by the time the festival ended to the time that we had our community living committee, uh, we were able to secure about eighty-eight thousand dollars in private investments. So it's, we have, we're not just sitting on our hands like hoping that this'll work itself out. We've been pushing to, to still try to make, make this work so that future years, it, it can be the same, same type of event.
Okay, I see some others in the queue. Counselor Rice?
I, I'm somewhat confused with the information you provided tonight. Under revenue, I see under merchandise, you've got thirty-two thousand eight hundred. Or I mean, you've got fifteen thousand.
Okay, yeah.
But I note in the one that was provided to council earlier that you spent thirty-two thousand eight hundred on merchandise. So somewhere there's seventeen thousand dollars in merchandise that isn't adding up.
Well, in the, um, in the original budget, we had a number of different categories that were, or a number of different items that were lumped in. Like, for example, um, in the, um, merch category, you know, we include things like the volunteer shirts, um, that are hard cost, they're not something that we sell. Um, also promotional items, I mean, there, if, if you look at those, the, the categories, I, I wish I had that budget, that other budget in front of me, um, the old one, but there, there are, you know, a number of different other things. I mean, in terms of merch, our festival merch, uh, actually sold out within hours of the festival opening, uh, to a point where we were taking kind of, our, our merch ladies did, uh, ordering over the course of the weekend and sold, uh, double in, in merch what we actually had even had available. So the merch did turn a profit, um, but there were other expenses that we just included in that to save creating, um, it doesn't, it could have been divided into more categories. So perhaps the, the volunteer t-shirt shouldn't have been under merch. However, they were bought through the same company and so I think that's kind of where they got lumped into merch, even though they never were. So perhaps that figure should just be, should be broken apart to, to more clearly show the merch price.
Okay, and one, now, suppose in your wildest dreams you'd have made a profit, where would that money have gone?
Um, well, uh, the, there, there are a couple of different, um, aspects to that and it really would depend. I mean, the, we certainly do not see the festival getting bigger. We're not in, in terms of, we're not gonna hire fancier artists or anything like that. Um, we would probably, uh, invest in some things that would save us money down the road. For example, we spent quite a lot of money on, um, tents. You know, it would, in the year, if we had a surplus in money, you know, we might invest in a couple of items. It would stop us having to pay rental on those. Um, we would also be very strongly considering, um, you know, making sure that the next year's festival is secure. Uh, the thing about hiring talent is you have to pay fifty percent of these, um, artist fees upfront at the time of booking for you're allowed to release them. So, you know, we're not gonna be putting ticket sales, uh, uh, there was something we ran into this year too. It was a real challenge, um, to be able to book the artists that I booked, uh, at a time where we did not have funding yet. And then, you know, prior to tickets really going on sale and taking off. So, you know, we, we would basically be looking at, A, saving the festival money. So, you know, we, we would basically be looking at A, saving the festival money, and B, you know, kind of making sure, looking at the health of the organization. Our mandate as an organization though is, is very similar, restricting ourselves very similarly to the Edmonton Folk Fest, who are very, very strong about community giving. That festival probably puts over $100,000 a year back into the community in various ways. Putting money into the park that supports them, helping out with artistic endeavors around the community. And, you know, in the long run, when our festival becomes a very strong organization, it is our goal to be able to really be supportive of the community and kind of work with Grand Prairie to, you know, to basically create and enrich this town.
So I, this may be my ignorance, but what kind of an organization are you?
We're a not-for-profit organization.
Are you, are you registered, are you?
We're registered in November of 2014.
As?
As a not-for-profit.
Just a not-for-profit. So you mentioned buying tents. Where would I find this in the budget you, you?
Oh, no, we haven't bought them yet. You, you asked if we had a surplus, like one of the things that we-
Oh, you would buy tents?
We would want to do is start buying the things that we would have to, were renting otherwise.
Okay, so if you rented them this year, where would I find it in this budget?
It's under site.
Site, okay.
Which is one of the larger ticket items.
So a question, my observation was you had an army of volunteers. I believe you had more than you needed. What if you'd have only had 300 and sold tickets to the rest of them?
So we actually did not have enough volunteers. And I have about 75 managers I had to find to grasp different components of this festival in order for it to run. And each of those managers had anywhere from four people to 12 people that they managed. To, so to find 75 managers in itself is quite a feat. And I have already sent out surveys to every single one of my managers and the rest of the 425 volunteers. And already in that feedback, some teams were fine. They said, sure, yeah, we had a good number. Many managers claimed they didn't have enough. And we are, we felt that as well in our, a lack of certain teams. And that comes from the fact that I'd never done that job. But I thought I did pretty good at putting it all together. So yeah, we could have used more teams, in fact. There were 24 different teams to divide that entire festival into the working organism that you saw. We could have used a golf cart team. There was one guy doing all the radios. He needs more people. So I could definitely sit down and talk with you more about how we could have used probably about 650.
I worked on lots of things like that without an army of that kind of volunteers, but anyways, it's okay.
We could have also, quite frankly, used, I, I mean, one area, for example, was security. We were shy in security and it did end up, we did end up having to bring in some paid people just because we were short. We could have saved ourselves actually some money if we'd had more people on that team.
And so some of those, those individuals, volunteers, were doing 12-hour shifts when ideally I was hoping people could do five hours max. To, the, one of their benefits was to get that free ticket to enjoy that festival. And that was really important to me, but we didn't get enough volunteers to make that possible. But we couldn't tell these people to sit down. They just wanted to keep going.
See, Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, my question, the information you provided tonight helps a bit, but I'm interested in, this is a significant ask, as you have appreciated and, and stated. Was there a strategy B and a strategy C in case this ask didn't come through?
Well, we, yes, and we're already executing that the best we can. And that's where the already raising almost $90,000 in private investors.
Would have been 200,000 though that you were behind before that.
Correct, yeah. So we're, we're trying to bridge that gap as soon as possible. We do have a fundraising concert coming up on October 13th. I think that's indicated in there. Our last social crowdfunding campaign aside, we were taking a new approach this time, but we're actually putting one together. We have a filmmaker from Edmonton editing the footage from a documentary that was actually being shot on-site during the, during the fest. Some of that footage is going to be used to help promote that. So yes, there, the, the plan is to keep at it.
I see you have a couple of other grant requests here listed.
Correct, yeah. And we're, we're approaching the county on October the 6th, the Thursday.
That's, to note, that is for next year's festival. We did approach the county twice in regards to this festival. I mean, we really have, we've been putting out feelers, you know, everything from the, really reaching out to a lot of corporate sponsors. And we're having a lot of luck for next year. I mean, there were, it was really hard to sell the festival to people who hadn't yet seen it and didn't understand what it was. We've already had a number of people approaching us saying they were really excited about the event and they want to support it next year. Those dollars are for next year though, and we don't want to mix the two, so we're still working on this.
Thank you. Counselor Clayton?
Mayor Given, first of all, I want to commend you on an excellent event that you ran. First year out of the gate, hard. You went great lineup, great people attended, got really, got the community behind you. And so congratulations on all the hard work. It's not easy to throw an event like that, and especially in your first year. I have a few questions, and if you want to take someone else, Mayor Given, in between, let me know. So as Counselor Redburn stated, just to sort of get a little bit more information, city council was your first choice to sort of ask for funds to help you show a, a break even? I know you've raised $88,000 in the meantime.
I don't know if that was the, the first choice. I mean, it was high up on the list. In addition to approaching other people. I mean, it's, if you look at the Edmonton Folk Fest, I know we refer to that a lot, but it's kind of the, the litmus that everyone judges on. Edmonton still, to this day, receives 211,000 from the city. They're in their 37th year. That's not the Folk Fest asking the city for the money. That's the city saying, this is an important thing to our event and we want to support it how we can. They draw a very large crowd. And while our goal is not to become that big, I think our goal is to become, and we've started to see that already, a major financial draw for the city. So in 10 years, realistically, we could be bringing in three to four million dollars for the city annually. So it is kind of that long-term investment, which is why this city was on that list of, realistically, who, who also benefits from this festival, local businesses. And we've approached them as well, and the city, yeah.
So I guess, you know, the, I would think, I would hope that you would say that council, to the, up to the date of the festival, had supported you. You know, they had given you cash, they'd given you grants, they had been fairly supportive as a whole in regards to your festival going forward. So if council, you know, was one of your top questions or one of your asks, can you tell me some other things that the city potentially has done for you? For example, can you give me a breakdown on some of your site expenses? Like what did you pay for the park? What did you pay for enforcement, RCMP, that type of thing?
Correct, yeah. And many of those were gift and kind. The, the park itself was gift and kind. RCMP this year, when we met with Sergeant McDonald about costs, they didn't know how to gauge this type of event, what type of response was needed. So they decided to take it, take whatever over time is required out of their own budget. We met with them afterwards and they said it did not tax them much. And now I don't know how to gauge that number wise.
Right, because you ended up hiring more security, so it taxed them somewhat.
What's that, sorry?
You said you hired more security because it was so busy, so?
No, the additional security was mainly to have the correct number on-site. RCMP doesn't really provide security that way. They are there if something goes wrong really, and to have a presence to, you know, their presence has a very calming effect on a lot of people. So, and they weren't there on-site 24/7. They were, they made appearances. And our hired security was mainly for beer gardens, which obviously always has the potential. And then just general perimeter security, which was primarily composed of the volunteers.
Thank you. So you didn't pay for the park, you didn't pay for RCMP, and you didn't pay for any staff that the city sort of helped at the park, correct?
I don't know how to answer the paying for the staff for the city.
So city staff that maybe empty garbage cans, cleaned up, helped set up barricades, et cetera.
That was primarily volunteers, but I'll let Laura speak to that.
Our, our lead volunteer for the parking happens to work for the city. And I believe he did ask his crew the morning of Friday to help him set up some barricades. So yes, that would have been a wonderful gift and kind from the city, as well as the garbage bins, which were wonderful, which were emptied by volunteers throughout the entire fest. And I'm fairly certain that we, we did a good job at cleaning the site at the end so that city staff weren't taxed in any other way than they would find from the public.
Sort of my last question. Based on, you know, you, you had mentioned that you got going, you had an opportunity to get, get great artists, and, and you sort of went for it. Based on what you know now, do you think this sort of just going for it because you had an opportunity, without knowing now what the financial repercussions you're sitting with, was the best decision for your event?
100% yes. We, you know, we created, I mean, it's, it's such a known fact that Folk Festivals, I, I don't think there is a Folk Festival in Canada of our genre that actually broke even in their first year. And I'll be clear, that's different from other types of for-profit events that sometimes do. But Folk Festivals are generally grown organically. And so we knew, if we had, I, I still looking back, think if we had started smaller, say our budget had only been 300,000 or 500,000 dollars, and we'd still only come to, you know, 80 or 90% of our budget, we'd still have a problem, but we would not have the provincial support. We wouldn't have created this great thing for the city. I mean, we, I have been so inundated with email, I've been so inundated with emails since the festival from people from out of town thanking me for the event, saying, I'm so, and these are people I don't know. These are just people that felt compelled to write, saying, I'm so excited about the event. We came up, we drove from Calgary, we brought friends. When is your festival next year? We're going to bring more friends, you know? And I mean, in, in the letter, for example, that Ainsley had given as a support letter, she talked about a caravan of 13 people that came from Calgary. The fact that 40% of our crowd came from out of town tells me that if we hadn't done this scale event that had brought those people in, and just done a, a nice local little event that had been great for the general Grand Prairie area, we would have actually possibly been in worse shape. Because of the fact that the bulk of the crowd came from, you know, came from out of town. And the fact that because the event was what it was, we got such phenomenal support from the media. CKUA spent thousands and thousands of dollars of their own money, you know, bringing their people up to broadcast live from the site. Like they, they invested close to $10,000 just for that. They invested thousands more into advertising it. There were weeks where I cannot turn on my radio any time of the day without hearing them talk about Grand Prairie and how great this was going to be. We wouldn't have gotten that support, again, if we hadn't had the really stunning lineup that we had, which cost. So it, you know, it was, it was, it's something that, you know, we, we stuck our neck out and, and decided that this was a calculated risk really worth taking because it's going to be such long-term benefit to Grand Prairie. You know, we came very close and we, I mean, we came within these economic times, actually amazingly close. So I would absolutely not take it back. Sorry, can I have one more, Mayor Given?
We do have a couple of others in the queue, but at least one of them has already asked a couple of questions. So go ahead, Counselor Clayton.
Thank you. So I don't think anybody's debating that you did a great job and a great event. So once again, congratulations on that. What if the city doesn't give you the money? What's next? I mean, you could tell me the festival's not going to exist, which would be really unfortunate. And, and you, but you've already getting money for next year, which is a good sign to me. But what if you don't get this money today? What happens?
Well, we would have to have a board meeting and seriously examine that. We would definitely, probably the first tack would be to continue doing what we're doing, which is, you know, reaching out to community. I mean, we're going to do that anyway. We, we need to, you know, grow strength for next year. It would definitely really, really, you know, impact our ability to successfully put on a fantastic event next year if, if you guys were to help us. But, you know, we do plan on, you know, figuring this out when we are another.
See, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just two final questions, because I know I was in the queue before and asked a couple. I, I, one is on, I see down here the city grants was $14,000. City gave like more than that. Is that in a different column?
Yeah, actually, the city, it's just above that where the cash was. One area's grants and one area's sponsors.
So that's not, so it's 24,000 total?
It is, correct.
Okay, my final question is, I was hearing, I think I was asking Dave that was up previously. I wasn't here when the event happened. I wish I was. I would have bought tickets and went. Did you, you had the best conditions, the variable for a concert can be from one extreme to the other. What happened if it would have rained? Did you do any of those type of numbers? If it would have rained, who would have showed and what kind of, how far?
The majority of our tickets were weekend passes, which means people are pre-buying to attend the whole weekend. The festival crowd is a pretty hearty crowd. They're used to those types of things. Obviously, it would have impacted us because it was our first year. The, the, the hope is that, like I was saying before, people buy the ticket because they know it's going to be a great event, regardless of who's playing. This year it did require names, it did require good weather. But we also sold a lot of weekend, the majority were weekend passes, and those people would have probably toughed it out.
A couple of other points. I mean, you, look at, again, the history of the Edmonton Folk Fest. I have sat through that festival where it rained start to finish through weekends. I mean, peop, the, the festival-going crowd, you know, when they travel from Calgary or wherever, they're, they're used to dealing with whatever conditions, you know, are, come up. The, the weather, you know, as much as it does perhaps impact the, the quality of the, the moment as you're sitting there under an umbrella. I mean, in, in 20, in 47 or 37 years, the Edmonton Folk Fest has never had an event that was canceled or was, you know, i- i- in anywhere their ticket sales, they were selling out year after year after year regardless. And people were coming and sitting through it. And it's, you always hope for good weather, but the festival crowd is really used to a rain or shine scenario.
Thank you. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I want to thank you for being here tonight. I, I was at the attendance there and I, I did think it was a heck of a show. Some artists I didn't quite collect, connect with, but others I did. Just a couple of questions. I, I sent them out prior to tonight's meeting. You've got, there was between 45 and 5,000 people on-site per day. Was there any hardcore proof that that was there, like?
Yeah, that, that was based off of ticket sales and then wristbands handed out. In addition to that, people on-site do include volunteers, they include artists, they include special guests, which make up a smaller percentage, but that, that is also inclusive of that.
Okay, so there was, as you estimate, 6,000 to 7,000 unique bodies over the weekend, so.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Now, the number of youth and seniors the city sponsored, just another question here. It's got approximately 800 to 1,000 free youth and seniors, courtesy of the city. How was that?
That's based off of the wristbands that were handed out. Now, there is a slight margin of error because if someone ripped off a wristband and came a second day, they would obviously have gotten a new wristband, even though they were the same person. But yeah, that is how.
Okay, and just one more, Mayor Given, and then I call her quits. Your expenses for soundstage and lighting and sound crew, can you tell me what that price was again? I think it's got on here expenses 105,600? Or that's?
Now, and, and there are, which part is that?
The, there are also two, two sides to that because we did manage to secure some extremely heavy gift and kinds in those, in those areas. Are you looking for an exact number of what was spent on those particular items?
I just, I was reading through one of the documents here, I can't find it right now, but it seemed it was quite a bit of money for.
Well, just to, just to give you an idea, the sound company alone. You're talking about the sound and lighting? That's the one you're?
Just the production.
The, the production company that we used, we didn't go fancy, but they, we had to go with somebody who was trustworthy because that's the number one question that the big artists ask first is who's doing your sound? And that's a consideration in terms of who, in terms of whether they'll come. So we picked the guys who do the Edmonton Folk Fest. Their original quote for us to come and do our production was very nearly a hundred thousand dollars just for the sound and lights. They gave us a significant gift and kind, so a lot of that, a bunch of that didn't come out in cash. But just to kind of show you the scope of what this type of thing costs, that's, that's how much it costs.
And I did get an email from somebody that was a volunteer and I can tell you that in that email, it said to try and communicate with council and other members to, to support the concert. And I probably got about a hundred emails. So your, your system is working. Thank you very much, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Council O'Toole. And now I see Council Rice and Council Clayton are in the queue. And we just want to ensure that we're asking something that hasn't been asked before. Oh, and I cleared the queue accidentally. Council Rice, if you'll just turn on your microphone. Freudian slip of my finger.
Sorry, I guess the problem I'm having, quite frankly, is we've sat here, we sat at the last meeting for an hour and a half each time, basically listening to how fabulous the festival was and how well it was run and what a draw it was. And I guess my mind is saying, I know that, I heard it, we know that, that's not new information. The city doesn't have a bottomless pit of money.
Council Rice, I just want to ensure that, especially considering how long we've gone, this is an opportunity to ask questions. Everybody's asked to this point, has asked some pointed questions, but certainly has asked questions.
So coming in the middle of a budget year, do you have any recommendations as to where we would get this money? I mean, we would have to take it from something else we were going to do. And it's a large amount of money for the city, believe me. So what would we not do, in your, your opinion, in order to come up with these funds?
It was my understanding, based on the last meeting, that the mayor was looking into discussing where that money was gonna come from. It was, it's, to the best of my knowledge, it was not gonna be pulled out from under any other organizations. But certainly, we are not the best people to speak regarding where the money would come from. It would be more a question that Mayor Mill Given, Given had referred to.
Administration.
Administration to.
And administration provided that answer to all members of council via email earlier today. Mr. Anderson identified his recommendation would be from the forecast, one point two million dollar surplus of the city this year.
But that's a forecast, that is not, that's not real money and pray to God it doesn't snow a lot. I just, I just want to make sure that you understand that, you know, we're not negative people. This is a hard decision because it's a lot of money.
We definitely understand and very much appreciate that. From our standpoint, certainly, it is our intention to bring infinitely more into the city than, than what is being asked today. You know, it is our goal and, and it's not only goal but projection that, you know, with the investment that allows this festival to get off its feet, that we plan to bring annually into the city, you know, according to statistics that have shown what other festivals bring into the communities, three to four million dollars annually into the economy, into economy that we definitely know can use all the help it can get. We also, you know, plan to use every opportunity we can to support local businesses. And basically, like I said earlier, it's our mandate as a society to, to really be as community-oriented as possible. So, you know, we're not standing before you trying to kind of suck the blood out of anything. It's actually more our goal to be supportive and certainly, even in how we were running the festival to begin with, you know, we used Grand Prairie Life Theaters or Box Office, which gave us, you know, an opportunity to support them to the tune of ten thousand dollars this year. We reached out to the SPCA and asked them if they wanted to come and run our green team and get the proceeds from the recyclables. They didn't capitalize on that, but we've been reaching out, you know, we reached out to the dinosaur museum and asked them if they'd like to use us as a platform to promote. We had people recommend, giving recommendations to people that they try out the East Link Center while they're in town. We really see ourselves as, you know, hopefully, you know, over time, as we grow strong, being a really strong community member who's giving to a lot of facets of this community and who's really benefiting a wide range of people, businesses, and organizations.
I see Councilor Clayton as the last one in the queue. Council Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Two quick things. Can you tell me why, when you recognized that you probably weren't, you had an opportunity to go for it and you probably weren't making your targets on your budget, you didn't think it was a good time to come to the council then and say, you know, we might not make this, but we got a great lineup, can you help us even if it's not with financial support? Because you were still optimistic, you'd get sales at the gate, but come for other support at that point as opposed to now?
Well, there, there are a couple of points that I guess could be made. We didn't know until very close to the festival that we weren't gonna make our mark on ticket sales. We remained optimistic up until the end just because the old adage, Grand Prairie's the last minute town. Also, you know, if you'll recall, you know, in our original presentation to council, we asked for twenty thousand dollars and received ten and came back and asked for the ten and, and were declined. And it became really clear that until we had proof of concept, until we could really show you, you guys, what we were actually bringing, it was impossible, we could sit here and kind of explain how great it was gonna be, but until we actually did it, it was gonna be really hard to get, you know, a much larger scale of support than what we had asked for.
And my last question, you know what, following up on Council Rice's comments, I think that if, you know, you're not successful with getting your money here tonight, don't take it a fact that people don't support what you're doing. And then it doesn't mean they don't support, support the arts and culture in our community. But this is truly a decision with other people's money. So it's something for you to consider going forward. You know, when you're asking for council money, it's not as simple as it, as it may seem, although we do have a big budget. It's still a substantial amount of money and, and there's so many other projects and, and things that need to be supported in our community. But my question is, is sort of following along the lines, if council, as, you know, so I'm just gonna ask you, Sarah, as a sort of event organizer, if there's a surplus in our budget and there's an opportunity to do other things, you honestly think that this is the best decision that council could do with some of the money?
Absolutely.
Pay your debt.
I see our festival honestly as a legacy event for the city. It's gonna be something that Grand Prairie is going to be known for nationally. I've been receiving phone calls from major music industry representatives in Toronto, people who, one guy used to write for Rolling Stone magazine and he phoned me up to say that he noticed our festival and just congratulate me on this lineup. This is really putting Grand Prairie on the map. It's brought people together. I've had so many local residents thank me so profoundly. They say they're seeing Grand Prairie in a different light. I've seen so many out-of-town people say, I just kind of had always thought of Grand Prairie as a place with high crime and never really planned on going there. And I came to Grand Prairie, I made friends while I was there, I had this amazing experience. So I see this, I see this as a big picture thing. I see it as, you know, in the grand scope of a legacy that's hopefully gonna last decades and become something that the city is going to be known for provincially and nationally and creates our city as a destination event. I, as, this is a destination event for the city and a signature event. You know, I absolutely see this as a huge opportunity and one that doesn't come around very often.
Okay, that's all the questions that we had in the queue. I can't imagine that there would possibly be anymore. And so thanks very much for your presentation today. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the crowd that wished to present to council on any community-related matter that hasn't had a chance to do it so far? Alas, there is? Sure. Obviously, we've been going for a while and so I'll ask you to introduce yourself and if you can do your best, particularly if it's on this topic. I won't prejudge, it may be a different topic. Well, there you go. So you've got at least five minutes. Breaking the chain here. Welcome. Please just introduce yourself with your names for our recording secretary.
I'm Darren Dorshat. I own the Tim Hortons on Country Club. As Kevin and numerous other people are clientele of ours. What I'm here to talk about is the sixty-eighth Ave construction or lack of construction, I guess. As construction's been going on since May and we're now into September and it doesn't seem to be progressing as it was forecast at the beginning of the season. Now, I'm wondering if somebody can tell me a little more definitive when Sixty-Eighth Ave is going to be close to finished and traffic is going to be opening up on that again.
Sure. I think probably our Director of Community Safety is the most likely to have the answer, although I'm not certain that he'd have. That would be the project sponsor that, in administration. So Director Glonte, do you have any information on current estimated timelines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will be a report going to the next Community Safety Committee next Tuesday. It says an update about the timelines and the schedule. There has been a lot of weather delays on the construction of the project, but there will be a formal update next Tuesday to committee. So Engineering Department is working on that.
So, so nobody here today has the exact information, administration is gathering that to bring back. Some of your colleagues from down there in the area were at a committee meeting earlier this morning and requested that information. So, so the city's gathering it.
Okay. So a follow-up to that is the impact that that has had on my particular business as a convenient location, convenient go-in, get your coffee, go. We're currently looking at about a thirty-five percent reduction in our sales from two thousand fifteen. Now, I give that the economy has slumped in the last year, but I can definitively say that I probably lost another ten to fifteen percent just based on that Sixty-Eighth Ave foreclosure or closure. And I'm wondering, has the city looked into any kind of a, I'm not even sure if I should call it aid or tax break or something like that, to help the business owners out in that area? Because realistically, our location is a very neighborhood location. Sixty-eighth was our major artery going past our business. And with that loss, honestly, I'm into a break-even point. In fact, I'm actually having to throw money into the business in order to keep it up.
So I think it's fair to say, a similar question was asked this morning by, again, by some other owners in the area. At that point, council asked administration to get this additional information about when the project is gonna be going forward so that we could have some information that would enable us to have that kind of discussion of whether or not the city wished to. I can tell you that at this point, no, there hasn't been any decision made or any direction given to staff to do any work on compensation per se to the business owners in that area.
Okay. As, I'm, I'm sure as you know, there, the, the Sixty-Eighth Ave being totally removed out of traffic has totally diverted a lot of the traffic that went along that over to Eighty, Eighty-fourth, down into, if you're going out into the industrial areas, people are taking the highway bypass. And I'm just wondering, is there or does the city have any kind of a policy on when something like this occurs? What?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that we don't at this time. You know, there are a few different avenues that are typically available. Businesses could attempt to file an insurance claim, I think would probably be somewhat challenging, but it's fair to say that, no, this city doesn't have a policy on this. So certainly my intent was to answer the exact questions that you asked, but I think your overall nature of your being here tonight was to say, is the city considering anything? I think that's the same question that was asked earlier this morning. And at this point, the direction from the committee was to gather additional information before council entered into that sort of discussion.
Okay. And as I understand it, is there, for the contractor, is there some type of a penalty system? Because as I recall in the letter at the beginning of the construction, they were forecasting that it would be done first week of September. I can safely say it's not gonna be done in the next week.
Well, there certainly are a variety of factors that impact construction projects, the most significant one obviously being rain and, and weather. I don't believe any contract that the city has for construction would give a hard timeline without some accounting of whether or not the contractor was actually capable of performing the work based on the weather. So that's an additional question that was asked this morning. And administration's getting us those details of what the requirements are in this contract and any sort of weather provisions that were in there.
So Tuesday, we can?
Director Glonte, you said Tuesday of next week there will be a formal report on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. The next Community Safety Committee meeting.
And Community Safety meetings are ten AM?
Ten AM, City Hall here. And Engineering Department is compiling an explanation about the liquidated damages that is part of the contract. So not for weather-related delays, but for other events that the city can recover some damages from the contractor. There's a clause on the contract. In this case, there has been a lot of rain and that's the main reason of the delays. But there will be a formal report.
So I think those are the sort of questions that committee was asking earlier this morning.
So on Tuesday, I can come in?
Absolutely can. Director Glonte, was the intent that this would be a report that was published with the rest of the package? Or will it be the one that will be handed out at the meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because of the deadline to upload reports has passed already, this will be a verbal report. But we can walk on a printed report as well for, for committee.
Okay. So I just want to check and see if it would be available at the end of this week for you to view. It sounds like you'd either have to attend or, yeah, that would probably, attendance would likely be the best. Or if there's a representative from the business there, you could probably have one attend and take back any handouts and circulate them amongst the business owners. Absolutely. Thanks very much for being here. I do see a couple of questions for you. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was just waiting to see if you brought it up. Darren, I was at Ninety Second before I come here, but the R and R, Richard and Rob are at Community Growth this morning and they were, you have an ask, and their ask was, we don't know what the rain days, if they're over their timeframe or not, but they asked that, can that money be allocated, some of it to us? So don't even know if we have a system for that, but I thought maybe you should talk to Rob and Richard because they were at Community Growth this morning.
Thank you. Council Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A couple of questions. Thank you for coming out tonight. Can you tell me?
Can you tell me, um, how many other Tim Hortons do you own in the community?
Uh, up until December of last year, we only owned the one, the Country Club location.
Okay.
Uh, we just opened up the Ninety-second location in December.
Okay, so you have no statistical data to say how much your stores are down overall? It's truly just the, the stats from the sixty-eighth store?
Uh, not entirely. The stats that I can safely show is that between the twenty-fourteen or twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, that we're down anywhere between... anywhere between twenty-six, twenty-seven percent, all the way up to this past August, we're down thirty-eight percent from our two thousand four, two thousand fifteen numbers.
So you have no idea how that compares to other Tim Hortons, because they're obviously not yours?
No, exactly. I can't, uh, but I can tell you right now that the September of last year, we were actually up. October, we were up. November, we started slipping, economy-wise, that's definitely, I'm sure, part of the reason there. But once we hit May, we were down thirty, thirty-three point eight percent.
Great. And can you tell me how that's affected your, um, employees and your store? Have you had to lay people off?
Uh, for several months, we tried to maintain staffing levels, kind of really not adjusting for the potential impact from the road closure, but as the construction started and we started seeing numbers, I can say that we've reduced our hours by about thirty percent. So we've, we typically use about a thousand hours, and we've dropped that down to about seven hundred hours.
Thank you.
Just, uh, one, uh, one thing that you said just leads me to ask this question soon. From September twenty fifteen, you sort of mentioned that you're up, up a couple of times over, uh, and then after that, you started to notice some decline. Other than, would it be fair to say that other than the economy, which you acknowledged in the Sixty-Eighth Avenue Project, which didn't start until the summer, and the road closure didn't start until the summer? Um, did you say that the, uh, Ninety-second Street Store, when, when did it open?
It opened up in December.
Okay.
So we were already seeing declines before the Ninety-second Store had even opened yet.
Sure, and, okay, and, but then that was also prior to Sixty-Eighth Avenue Construction starting, is that...
Right, and I, I do recognize the economic downturn, Ninety-second opening definitely has some impact there, but if we look at strictly, uh, from the time that construction started to now, we've accelerated from being down twenty-six, twenty-seven percent, we're down to thirty, thirty-eight point eight percent. So we've, we've lost an additional twelve, thirteen percent, which, other than economic, I, the only other major factor that I can point to is that sixty-eighth Ave construction.
And, okay, okay, thank you, thanks very much. Uh, so as we said, there'll be some additional information coming to committee, uh, next week, next Tuesday, um, and you can either attend, yeah, the community meeting's right over there, as Council Redburn's pointing out, could either certainly attend, or if , uh, the business owners wanted to have a representative attend on your, sort of, all of your behalf, that certainly be, uh, would be possible as well. So, thanks very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wanted to speak in the delegation portion, um, that isn't subject of a public hearing? Okay, so I am going to say that we got through everybody that was here tonight intending to speak, finally, um, but we will close the delegation portion of our agenda. I would remind the public that this is an opportunity that exists at every regular city council meeting. This wasn't some kind of special city council meeting where we just did this this one time. Uh, the opportunity does exist at every regular city council meeting. So, uh, we'll move on to public hearings. Uh, item six point one, Land Use Bylaw Amendment C twelve sixty dash fifty-nine, amendments to the Home Business Regulation in the Land Use Bylaw. I call this public hearing to order and look to Administration for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This presentation is about the proposed amendments to the Land Use Bylaw regarding home businesses. Before highlighting the proposed amendments, the presentation will shed light on the reasons behind the proposed amendments and also the timeline. The current Land Use Bylaw for Home Business Regulation, uh, have remained almost unchanged since two thousand three. Over the years, enforcing some of these regulations has been a challenge to both Development Permitting and Enforcement Services, and the main reasons behind this are as follows. First, the permitting process for a minor home business is complicated because it includes both a development permit as well as a business license. Some of the regulations are either too lenient or inconsistent, and lastly, over the past, past few years, Administration received a number of inquiries that don't have regulation in the Land Use Bylaw. So go, going over the timeline here, to add these, these issues, I'm just going to explain how it unfolded to the stage we are at now. Administration conducted meetings with Enforcement Services as well as Development Permitting Section to just gain an understanding of what the issues are and the ideas about solving or dealing with them in the Land Use Bylaw. This was followed by conducting, conducting initial background research, including some comparable municipalities, and after that, we, Administration requested the action from CGC to initiate the review of the Land Use Bylaw regarding home business regulations. Following that, Administration researched the home business regulations of thirty-five different municipalities, which led to identifying some potential amendments. And these amendments, as shown here on the timeline, uh, were discussed in a council workshop, and also there were, the ideas were posted online in the format of an online survey. The feedback was consolidated and further research was done, and the revised proposed draft of the Land Use Bylaw was presented to CGC back in July. Based on the final amendments on ideas received from CGC back in July, we advised the proposed Land Use Bylaw regarding home business, and we are at the stage now that we are presenting it to the council. And I'm not ju- going to go over all the details, but the main changes are going to be highlighted in this presentation. So, on the left-hand side are the existing categories that we have now in the Land Use Bylaw. On the right-hand side are the proposed ones. The main changes, main change of all would be deleting the existing two categories, namely the minor home business and the major home business, and they're placing the two with home office and home business. The idea behind doing this is that the home office will acquire only a business license and not a development permit. However, the home business category will acquire the two, a development permit as well as a business license. And home office consists mainly of office users that don't acquire home visits, unlike home business that can allow for home visits. Another item that we discussed in the two CGC meeting, as well as the council workshop, was utility trailers, and the way we have it in the proposed amendments is that utility trailers up to two thousand kilograms, uh, maximum height of two meters, and maximum length of four meters could be parked in the driveway in association with a home business, and this is only for a home business. And basically, what we're talking about is allowing a utility trailer similar to the one on the right-hand side. Initially, before advising it, we were looking at a bigger utility vehicle, a vehicle similar to the one on the left-hand side. And also, a new category in the home business regulations is being added, which is the one for pet grooming, grooming, however, that would be subject to specific conditions. And also, as part of a home business, which also is a discretionary use, uh, food, food catering could be allowed. Also, as part of the proposed new regulations, DOs, meaning Development Officers, will can evoke the development permit for home business for non-compliance if needed. Also, as part of the new regulation, or, sorry, the proposed ones, the square footage allowed for a home office or a home business is going to be smaller than the existing ones. So what we are proposing is twenty-five percent for a home office and thirty percent for a home business, up to a maximum twenty square meter for a home office, up to a maximum fifty square meters for a home business, and it is now the existing Land Use Bylaw does not have cab on the square footage. It has only percentage. So why are we doing what we're doing? Just to conclude, the amendments, uh, uh, aim at streamlining, lining the permitting process, also expanding the permitted activities, as long as they don't interfere with the quality of the neighborhood or the, affects the life of the neighbors, and also ensuring that home businesses are secondary activities by reducing the maximum area permitted for a home business. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Administration at this point? Council Rice, recognizing we'll also have an opportunity after we ask for any delegations. Yeah, Council Rice?
Um, I was surprised to see that you've added pet grooming in there, but I saw the condition was the animals must be kept inside. So unless somebody's figured out a way to toilet train dogs, I don't know how that's going to work.
So you, Mr. Mayor, uh, we discussed it many times, and one of the conditions that we have, uh, we had and we still have is that all animals will have to be inside. So this was discussed during the two CGC meeting, as well as the council workshop, and council as well as CGC were in agreement that as long as we have conditions similar to the one about keeping them inside at all times, this could be something we could include in the Land Use Bylaw.
Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I mean, I just, a question on the trailers, uh, french fry trailers or whatever they are, uh, going to be parked in the parking lots, is there going to be a width standard, like, uh, you know, your lot's thirty feet, so park one of them, and you're parking on the street where there's maybe no parking? Is that been in consideration, anything here, um, of allowances for trailers and where they might be parked, depending on the variance of the frontage of the lot?
Lee?
So you, so you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor McLean, uh, after the council workshop, we went back, meaning, uh, Development Officers as well as Administration, to talk about the best ways to deal with it, and the way we dealt with, with it is under this section, we don't specify how wide the lot should be, but we specify how far the, uh, the utility trailer should be from, uh, the closer point of the side yard. So by saying this, not all lots will be able to accommodate such a utility vehicle. So like the way we have it here, and I can add it verbatim, it, it is located no closer than one point five-two meter from the interior edge of the sidewalk, or where no sidewalk exists from the curb.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just, uh, one question regarding, uh, people that have already had a business license, that are already doing business in their homes. Um, I see there's going to be some changes there. Would they be grandfathered, uh, to some of the, uh, requirements?
Yes, so you, um, Mr. Mayor, uh, generally speaking, any amendment to a Land Use Bylaw does not affect what is in existence, those are usually grandfathers, however, if they apply for a new, uh, say, development permit, they will have to comply with the new regulations.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarity.
Thank you. Um, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll ask if there are, uh, if there are any, uh, presentations or submissions, uh, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this Land Use Bylaw Amendment? Is there anybody who came tonight wishing to speak to this Land Use Bylaw Amendment? Uh, I'll ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak in opposition of this Land Use Bylaw Amendment as proposed? Okay, um, seeing none, I'll ask if there's, uh, any, I see a couple of council members in the queue. Uh, are those questions for Administration or Business Rising? Okay, okay, I see Councilor McLean in the queue, uh, so I will close the public hearing, we'll move on to Business Rising. Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, I move that council give first reading to Bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash fifty-nine being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Thanks very much. Uh, Council McLean, there's no discussion or debate on first reading, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move to give second reading to Bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash fifty-nine.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and just speaking of the motion, I'll be supporting the motion. I think the, uh, was a comprehensive look at, uh, at our, uh, Home Business License Bylaw, and I think, uh, number of the changes will, uh, expand the possibilities, yet streamline the process, so I think, uh, that's, uh, will improve service that the city can provide in this area. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Redburn. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on second reading. Thank you. That motion carries, Councilor McLean? Just have to turn your microphone on, it went off in the queue there.
All right, thank you, Mayor Given. I move we have third reading for Bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash fifty-nine at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here tonight. Uh, in order for this motion to pass, it must carry unanimously, uh, otherwise, the third and final reading would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can have third reading. Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move we give third reading, to have third reading to Bylaw C twelve sixty dash fifty-nine being amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Council McLean. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to item six point two, uh, additional Land Use Bylaw Amendments of a housekeeping nature, uh, Bylaws Amendment C twelve sixty dash sixty renaming of the Brookfield Outline Plan. Uh, call this public hearing to order and, uh, look to Administration for an introduction. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this second presentation is about the proposed amendments to the Land Use Bylaw regarding housekeeping items, as well as the proposed naming of one of the existing outline plan, which has the name of Brookfield as we speak now. Uh, the reason why we combine the two, uh, items, because even though one of them is just Land Use Bylaw and the second one is an outline plan, the two acquire, acquire public hearing, and they were deemed to be of housekeeping nature by Administration. So, I'm going to talk first about the housekeeping amendments in the Land Use Bylaw, and I'm going to follow this with talking briefly about the renaming of the, uh, Brookfield Outline Plan. The current Land Use Bylaw was adopted in two thousand thirteen. Uh, the reason for what we're doing tonight, or trying to do tonight, is to add, clarify, and expand some definitions, and amend the Land Use Bylaw district map regarding the HVC, which stands for High Visibility Quadrant, and I'm just, later on, I'm going to explain what I mean by this, and also deleting or amending to some sections of the Land Use Bylaw because they are a little bit inconsistent. And just, I would like to emphasize that all these amendments are technical in nature, and they don't- and they don't have any change in policy. That's why they were deemed to be housekeeping items. And just talking about the item I just mentioned, the HVC, which stands for the High Visibility Corridor, I'm just trying to highlight this section here. The section here that I'm trying to actually point at, this needed to be added because as a result of annexing the World Service Area, the High Visibility Corridor in the municipal development plan was extended to be all the way to the west side of the city. And because the municipal development plan has been amended to show this, we also need to amend the land use parlor because the two documents have to be consistent. And as far as the other section, which is, I'm trying to point at, this is the northern section of 116 State. This is already part of the High Visibility Corridor, but there was an oversight and it was not included in the land use parlor map. So we are not adding anything new. As for the renaming of the Brookfield outline plan, just would like to give you an idea of where it is located. It's this area southeast of the city, and I don't think any kind of construction has been done on the site. And the reason why we are amending the name is because some of the documents submitted to planning and others submitted to engineering had different naming. And just to be consistent, we are trying to have the same name, which is Field Book, Book, as proposed by the applicant. And I just, as I just alluded to at the beginning, the reason why we had to go through a public hearing to change the name of the outline plan is because it's a statutory plan. And the whole idea is to ensure that the naming is consistent. And the main idea behind the land use parlor amendments is just to provide greater clarity for development officers when they deal with application, so that, to avoid inconsistent regulations, which will result in improving customer service, because the interpretation would be the same regardless of which development officer is dealing with an application. There's one point I would like to mention here, is that because the land use amendments are not tied to a specific sites, for this reason, there was no mail out or sign on any property. However, the proposed amendments and the public hearing were advertised twice in the local newspaper.
Thank you. Okay. Open for discussion. Any questions for administration? Seeing none, then I'll ask if there was anyone in attendance here tonight that was keenly interested in the name of the Brookfield outline plan and wish to speak to it, or anybody that wished to speak to the housekeeping amendments as proposed? Is there anybody that wished to speak to these public hearing items? Seeing nobody rushing forward, I'll ask council one last time. Any questions? Counselor, I imagine you're for action, business rising. Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. I will move to business rising, and I'll look to Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-60, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. As with before, no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-60. These are the housekeeping items.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing nobody in the queue, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we have third reading for bylaw C-1260-60 at this meeting.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. As with our previous public hearing business, this is a motion to have third reading. By the end of tonight, the entire crowd's going to understand exactly how this process works. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We can have third reading. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-60, being an amendment to the land use parlor.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn, are you going to continue on with the second?
Can do. I'd move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1262-01, being an amendment to the Brookfield Neighborhood Outline Plan by law.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Again, no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1262-01. This would be the renaming of the Brookfield Outline Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1262-01 at this meeting.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. We could have a pop quiz for this motion to pass. It must pass what unanimously? Thank you. Okay. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. We can have third reading. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. I move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1262-01, being an amendment to the Brookfield Neighborhood Outline Plan by law.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? I would just note for anybody watching in the crowd that it's not our choice that we do this in this process. This is actually a requirement to the provincial government. When council is amending bylaws, you're required to go through three full readings. So it's not just for our benefit that we do this, we're actually required to. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. I think we get paid by the vote. That motion carries. I think we have no further public hearing business. We did have one item of unfinished business from previous council meeting minutes, and this was a case where third and final reading didn't get the unanimous vote, and so it is back here tonight, land use bylaw amendment C-1260-58. I don't know whether we need a brief introduction from administration as a reminder of what that was. Mr. Walton, you've been here the entire time. I feel it only fair to give you an opportunity to tell you why, tell us why you were here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the amendment application is to change the zoning of two properties on 100th Street at approximately 75th Avenue to direct control, to allow for the development of additional parking for the Victory Church that's also located in that area. Yeah, the, I guess the reason why we're here is obviously there was no unanimous consent for third reading at the last meeting. The applicant was not at that meeting. They are actually here tonight. They do have a copy of a plan for the parking lot. That was one of the questions that came up a couple weeks ago. And I don't know if procedurally that can happen, because obviously the public hearing is closed, but...
That's true. I believe that council is not allowed to have any additional information outside the public hearing, where another member of the public wouldn't have the ability to comment on it. So I appreciate that the question has been asked and has been answered to administration, but council won't be able to consider that when they vote on this third and final reading. Can I get a motion for third and final reading? Counselor Rice?
Hey, I would move that council give third reading to land use bylaw amendment C-1260-58.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was one of them asking about the parking lot design, because it was nothing said, and it is a beautiful area. And I was wondering as well as about the bank encroachment area and how it was prevailing, because the condominiums right beside it, we had major issues in the 90s, maybe some people forgot about it, but we did. And then those questions were answered, and maybe because of protocol, we can't go through it, but maybe something's missing here that it could have been brought forward by, through our development personnel, to say, this is where they want to put the parking lot, we're going to add some more trees to make it even more beautiful, and it's safe on the banks. Now, maybe that's going to come after, but it would have been nice to have it before, because now even on the third reading, they can't bring it forward. So that's kind of a regret.
Yeah. So Counselor McLean, I certainly specifically remember the question about top of bank was asked, and administration answered that, acknowledging that it wasn't possible to identify a specific top of bank. And so in that case, they had erred to the side of caution by ensuring that the development was kept as far away as possible from the recommended area given by engineering services. So I think that that question certainly was answered. I know that there was some broad questions about the design, and that's correct, that information wasn't available at the time. So, but we are in a position tonight to vote on third and final reading. We can't accept additional information, because with a public hearing, if somebody, there is new information that somebody didn't have a chance to comment on, they could claim that they didn't have full ability to participate in the, in the process. So, any other discussion or debate? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be supporting the third reading. I do note that in the package that we received today, they have addressed site access in G-104.4, longest title ever, 104 dot four dot 17 dot six. G, site access is referenced. And also, we had questions about landscaping along 100th, and so that is in 104 dot four dot one seven dot seven C. So pleased to see that feedback from council last meeting in the document today.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. And just to be specific, those are actually motions that were made by vote and amendments to include specific provisions around some of these areas. Okay. Any further discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That handles all of our unfinished business. We have no items under reports this evening, and that would take us into committee business, starting with item 9.1, Community Growth Committee Meeting from August 23rd. Counselor Clayton, I would think that was your meeting.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that council receive the minutes as presented for the Community Growth Meeting held August 23rd, 2016.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions we need to catch before we adopt them? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thanks very much. Counselor Clayton, anything you wanted to highlight out of that set of minutes?
Yeah, there was, it was a good full meeting, a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. Committee approved a one-year pilot program for the development of a pop-up shop concept for the retail services incubation in the downtown revitalization zone, and it's referred, the concept's being referred to the fall budget. As well, we had a presentation from Disabled Transportation Society, and it was a good update. We also had correspondence received from the University of Alberta in regards to energy and environmental solutions, and we're waiting more, for more information to come back from administration on that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. That'll take us to 9.2, the Community Living Committee Meeting from August 23rd, 2016. I note our chair is away, and so I think that will fall to Counselor O'Toole, who is sort of second on the list in that committee, if you could do the minutes in the business rising.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee Meeting held Tuesday, August 23rd, 2016, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Actually, I've got Counselor Radburn, I'd like to make a suggestion here.
Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So as, as my colleagues will note, we have counselors, Tarrant and Teason, away tonight. One is heading to Winnipeg because his father is very, very ill. The other is in the hospital with his good wife, and they're, I don't know if the baby has arrived, but it is imminent. Thank you, Helen. In conversation with one of my colleagues, I was asked and committed to, to making this motion. I would move that this item be tabled for two weeks till the next council meeting for discussion and decision. So I'm not sure if it's in order or whatever, but that would be my intent. I'll speak to it if the motion is allowed.
Yeah, and so, sure. And so I think that the...
921 Bear Creek Folk Festival.
And so I think the intent would be to postpone rather than table, and so that that motion is in order. It is debatable and amendable, and your intent is to be time-specific, so to the next council meeting.
Next council meeting. And just speaking to it, just this stuff happens, and these are both emergent and unexpected circumstances. And so, in fairness to those two, I said I would put it to my colleagues for vote.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Radburn. That motion to postpone to the next council meeting is open for discussion and debate. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question to Terry Legislation Services. The rule of law or legislation, how many counselors in this chamber have to be present to actually pass a motion? Like, five out of nine? You know, what's the rule?
You certainly could just ask the question straight up and ask the chair, and I can give you a ruling on that, because we're a council of nine. Our quorum is a majority of councils, so we could certainly continue to have a meeting with five council members, and any vote is a majority of the council members in attendance. So if you want to ask a question, you can just ask me.
I'll speak into this one, and I thought I'd ask Legislation too, because they know this fact as well. This is unprecedented. We had a lot of individuals over time that haven't been here in council chambers that never got the vote, no matter what the reasons are, Counselor Radburn. No matter how heartstrings they are, we do have enough councils here to make the vote decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor McLean's vent on this, that there is nothing particularly special about this motion in comparison with the incredible raft of other motions that we have involving much greater amounts of money and impact on people and all the rest. Why would we single this out to be delayed? I believe that we should defeat the motion.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Logan. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also will speak in opposition to the motion. I think that although the situations are unique, and one being obviously unfortunate, we did pass a policy this year for council to be able to call in for one motion at every meeting, although the circumstances this time may not be possible, and it's unfortunate. There are times that council can call in, and so therefore I won't support the motion because it's unfortunately just a matter of circumstance that neither of them can be here this evening.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Rice?
I will support the motion. Yes, there is legalistics, or whatever you call it, and then there is courtesy and consideration for fellow counselors. It's not an unreasonable request. They're not asking we delay it for 10 years. They're asking we delay it for two weeks, as it's an item that has import, is important to both of them, and they would like to be here on it. So I find their request reasonable, and I will support it.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. I'll just say that I'll be in support of the motion. I think I would hope that council members recognize that my intent is always to ensure that everybody has as full an opportunity to participate, using all the possible procedures available to them. The ability to call in does require council members to notify the mayor and the city manager with some notice in writing. That may not have been possible tonight, but my desire is to ensure that all council members have an opportunity to participate in the discussion and debate on community issues, and those, especially those ones that they're passionate about. So I will be in support of the motion. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we'll call for the vote on the motion to postpone time-definite to the next council meeting. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion does not carry, and so we will move on with the business at hand, item 9.2.1. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council approve a grant in the amount of $100,000 to the 2016 Bear Creek Folk Festival.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Just one addition, I think at the committee meeting, we had asked administration to make a recommendation of a funding source. In regular practice, council would identify a funding source, and I think Mr. Anderson identified if council wished to fund it, the appropriate would be from the 2016 operating surplus. Would you be willing to include that in your motion? Counselor Rice? Did you have a, are you looking for discussion or debate on that, or is it on this point? Counselor O'Toole?
I will include that in the motion.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice, you got in the queue just behind Counselor Logan. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I would like to speak in favor of the motion. I've agonized long, and, oh gosh, maybe too long, because the last two festivals I remember being at were way... being at were way back in the mid-'70s with Mariposa and Fort, and the Capella Valley. So, don't be surprised that I don't have all my hair falling off. This is, this has been a good thing for the community. I really, really worried at this over the last few days about how the stance I was going to take on it, and I believe that this has been very good for the community in a number of ways. First of all, of course, it's been great entertainment, and secondly, it's helped to put us on a map, the map that the people that follow festivals will follow, and that's important. It brought income to the, to the community, and if we're successful in having it carry on, and more, there'll be more income there. We've also already seen, I believe, that there's an easing of the pressure of the full amount that's been asked for in terms of the money, and I believe that as time goes on, that that loan will be repaid and will be repaid fairly easily. I think this is sort of a slam dunk. I urge you to vote for the motion.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor Rice?
And I have a question. It's not a loan, as I understand it. Am I correct?
That is correct, the way the motion's phrased right now.
Okay, so it's not a loan. Okay, are you, are you amending the motion to make it a loan? I, like Counselor Logan, I agonized long and hard. It was a, it was a fantastic event. Grand Prairie's known for having fantastic events, and I know that many, many other organizers of events have worked long and hard, and, and they too had a dream, and they too wished they would have had a million dollars to put on their festival. However, they were cautious instead of going ahead and thinking, you know, goodness would rain down upon them. Having said that, I will say, I will support the motion. I don't want Grand Prairie to get a reputation of a place that doesn't pay its bills, but I, I want it clearly understood that I am not prepared to make any commitment for next year beyond our normal processes. So, you know, I don't want this to become an annual event. I meant them coming to this table.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. You mean this process of...
This one here, funding after, yes.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. Counselor Clayton.
Mayor Given, I do want this event to become an annual event, and I support many of the councillors' thoughts that it's been a tough decision. Everybody around this table agrees they did a great job, they worked hard, they put on a great event. However, I don't think that events and community events that people love can happen at all costs. I think that at some point, we need to be fiscally responsible. It's not a loan. We're not getting this money back. We need to, if we have an opportunity to have a surplus, to pay off debt, have an opportunity to reduce taxes, and unfortunately, this isn't a decision that I'm prepared to make with a potential surplus. I think that this event will go ahead. The community loves it enough. They will get support regardless if it's from council. There's many organizations, service groups, corporations in the community that think that this event needs to continue, and I'm confident that it would continue even without the support of council tonight. So although I think it was a great event, they worked very hard, and I'm optimistic that it'll happen again, I don't think it's our obligation to help them by paying off their debt at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to speak to a couple of issues here. Been hearing this rumbling about a surplus of the city. Well, being on council six years, I realize we usually put it back in our snow budget, and last year I only took the shovel out twice, but this year it could be like 100 times. We don't know how much snow we're going to get this winter, and our budget's not really overfilling. So to say we have a huge surplus, I kind of disagree with those numbers. And the other thing I want to speak of is, this is going to open up for a lot of other different nonprofits to come forward. I mean, what's special about this group, a first-time event? I'm not going to say you're special this time. There's so many that have been here for 10, 20 years, 15 years, that knew how to do their budget. So speaking to that, I look at the bright side. Sometimes a loss makes you stronger in the future, but I cannot use taxpayers' as a safety, taxpayers' money on a safety net on your gamble to double your budget. I would be voting no.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, I won't be supporting the $100,000 grant. I, it's a balance. We're trying to balance, and I agree that it could be and may become a signature event for our fair city, and I respect that. And the pride that I felt and the community felt after the event, I felt, and so that's really important. So again, I'm really supportive of the festival. But we have to balance, as others have said, by other needs. And so, for me, the $100,000 isn't reached that balance. I do have a support number in mind, but I think that we'll see how the process unfolds. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. I see Counselor Clayton's in the queue. I'll just come in in the middle here to say that I will be voting in support of the motion. I think that there are legitimate issues that have been raised by others in the community and on council with respect to setting a precedent. I recognize that that's something that council needs to consider, and certainly we need to operate at the policy level. I think at least in any case of the result of this motion, I think an additional piece of action would be to refer to an appropriate standing committee, the development of a major festival or tourism event policy, funding policy, because I just, I really believe that this event, it demonstrates that there is a different category of festival event in Grand Prairie that isn't appropriately considered in our current festival funding program. So I think council needs to work at a policy level. I think we've identified a gap in our policies, and whatever the outcome of the motion on the funding, I think that one of our responsibilities is to refer that issue back to an appropriate standing committee so that we can develop a policy so that should there be any future requests for a significant event that helps, that provides the community benefits that others have identified, that we have a policy. So I think that that's something that is worthwhile, and I also appreciate the concerns that I heard around accountability and oversight. I appreciated the offer of the organizers to invite the city and city council to appoint a representative to work with their board or to, to ensure that the city's investment is well-managed, if that is a concern, and I certainly think that that's something that could be followed up. Again, maybe dependent, I don't know, you know, dependent on the result of the motion, but I think that those are two pieces of business arising that I think are important. Finally, I just have to say that on reflecting on the significant dialogue on this in the community, for me, the thing that I think brought the issue into focus was the number of times that people came up to me afterwards and said, "Wow, wasn't that a great event? It didn't feel at all like I was in Grand Prairie." And it's a bit of an odd comment to raise here at a council table in Grand Prairie council chambers, but I appreciated the sense that was offered in because I've had it in two other contexts. With the Eastlake Center, especially on opening, people have often come up to me since then and said, "Wow, I can't believe I'm in Grand Prairie when I'm in that building. It's just fantastic and such an asset to the community." And the other is, of course, Montrose Cultural Center and the Library Art Gallery is another space that I have had exactly that same, the same word said, that I can't believe when I'm in this building that I'm in Grand Prairie. That's what people said to me about this event, and I think it demonstrates that sometimes those things that, that really advance our community are sometimes controversial, because I certainly know that the Eastlake Center and the Montrose Cultural Center were, but after they've been moved forward, they've become beloved by the community, and they become true assets to the community, which I think both those facilities have. The difference here is that rather than a $100 million capital facility that we'll be paying a mortgage on and operating costs forever, the request is for $100,000 in support to ensure that this festival has an opportunity to grow, and so for all those reasons, I am in support of the motion. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I do agree. I think that going forward, there needs to be something established in order for these events to be able to continue and be good successes within our community. I also agree with Counselor McLean's comments in regards to precedents. There's many events that continue in the last year or two that haven't survived, that haven't got council support, and unfortunately, this, in my opinion, unfortunately, this event made a conscious decision to go ahead regardless of the fact that they weren't confident, they didn't have private support, they didn't have public support to fall back on, they didn't have 39 years of history and a bank account to help them if they didn't make money this year. And so I think there were things along the way they could have done to not take such a gamble, albeit a great event, albeit that probably it wouldn't be as good going forward if they hadn't done such a great splash this year. I just don't think that it's right that we set this precedent. We take potential surplus money that we could do other things with, and at this point, like somebody made the comment, we could have a ton of snow this year and have even more debt. I think that we need to make the right decision based on what we have now, and we know that the community will support this if we don't tonight. The community love this event, and they will support it if we don't. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none in the queue, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. Is there any further business arising? Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. As I mentioned earlier, I will put forth a motion that council approve a grant in the amount of $50,000 to the 2016 Bear Creek Folk Festival. So, Lord Lauren, what are you thinking? Well, we put $25,000 into the first, each of the first two years of our budget. We have used those monies mainly in sponsorship, but I think we missed the mark in how we should have expended those monies. We did not put monies for tourism in years three and four, but for me, this is an opportunity for us to do that. It's not in the budget now, but it's an opportunity to do that so that we can help ensure that the festival can get stronger by having a base of, that's closer to where given. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Logan.
Thank you. I would like to commend Counselor Radburn on the motion, and I will definitely be supporting it.
Thanks, Counselor Logan. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will not be supporting the motion. I believe Counselor Radburn is reaching for a middle ground, but I believe they were not sustainable on their budget, and we have many other organizations that are and do follow their budget. For that reason alone, I will not support it.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry. The Counselor Radburn, was your intent that the funding source was the same as previous? Thanks very much, Mr. City Manager. So the intent was that the funding source for the $50,000 be the 2016 operational surplus? Is there any other business arising? Again, for me, I think the creation of a policy with event, respect to events of the scale is something, business I'd at least like to explore. Counselor Clayton?
So, in further discussion to that, I guess what I'm looking for is the process here. I mean, I'm not going to set a number. Do we refer to administration to come back with a suggested budget amount? What are we looking for?
So, so my suggestion is, is a policy. I think at this point, our festival funding is pretty well-defined. The maximum amount that's available is, I believe, $15,000 or $14,000, and so I think that this has demonstrated that there are other types of festivals or events that are of a different scale than that would support, and I would like us to examine that issue and see whether we need to have a policy in place for major tourism events or festivals.
Sure, so I'll take a stab at it.
And that would just be a refer to committee, actually.
Yeah.
Because that work would have to happen in a different form.
For sure. So I'll take a stab here. I would move that council refer to community, the appropriate committee, to come back to, with a policy, with funds established to promote additional tourism dollars to create and enhance and support festivals in our community, and...
Sure. Counselor Clayton, I think, so certainly my intent isn't around, around a dollar value. I think we probably just say, refer the issue of a policy for major tourism events, tourism events and festivals to the appropriate standing committee.
Sure.
Is that, that...
Yep, fair enough.
The discussion about whether the policy would include funding amounts, or whether and how we would define what a major event is, would all have to happen at committee, so probably just the title and refer to appropriate standing committee.
That's fine. Thanks.
Okay. So, Counselor Clayton, you're comfortable with that being the motion?
Yep.
Any discussion or debate? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be in favor of this motion because the previous motion is going to make the door wide open, and we're going to need to be looking, because we're going to have people come with their handout for money that have been involved in here for 30 years, 10 years, or 20 years, not just one year, so we just opened the box.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any other discussion or debate on the referral motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then the final, you know, the final issue that I saw, and I certainly, I could either leave the chair, I could ask if there's a councilor that would be willing to make a motion, as with that previous one, was just with respect to the city naming a representative to the board, and if there was a motion directing the mayor to identify appropriate representative at the subsequent council meeting, certainly with the city putting in funds at this point, and with the stated importance of the event to the city, I think that might be appropriate, and appreciate the offer from the organizers. Counselor Logan?
Yes, I would move the motion you just referred to.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. The intent would be specific to the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival, that the mayor make a recommendation at a subsequent council meeting of a person to represent the city at the board meetings. Okay. Any discussion or debate? Counselor McLean?
I will definitely be supporting this. It's going to open up the box for many other organizations to say, "Oh, yeah, we have one too, because we're going to get 50, 100 grand," and it's a bad move, I would not support it.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Rice?
I won't be supporting the motion either. We've had requests earlier this year from other organizations, and we looked at it and said, like, our plate is full already. So, I, you know, we need to have, and I thought we were going to have some discussion on boards that we are prepared to sit on. I thought that was coming up at our next strategic direction, or, you know, strategic planning session, so I don't like these kind of decisions, so I won't be supporting it.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thanks very much, Mayor Given. I agree with Counselor Rice. I think that we shouldn't necessarily vote on it right now, but I think when we do have this discussion, I think that would be something that we should consider. Also, I'm not sure if it necessarily needs to be a councillor, it could be somebody from finance or somebody like that, so just throwing that out there.
And just to be clear, the motion was the identify appropriate representative, it wasn't a member of council specifically? Counselor Logan?
Yes, I would urge you to, in fact, support the motion. The work that the festival society is doing is ongoing right now. Will be impacting our community, it has impacted our community, and will continue to impact our community, and it behooves us to get a representative of whatever sort we finally decide in on it so that we're able to track, support, assist. They're doing their work right now. Let's start supporting it.
Thanks, Counselor Logan. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll just make one final pitch to say I see this as an accountability mechanism. One of the things that was raised for me was that this organization is independent from the city, and how does the city know what happens with money, and so I see this as an accountability mechanism at its heart. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion does not carry. Is there any other business arising on this motion, or sorry, on this item, 9.2.1? Seeing none, then we'll move on to 9.2.2. Counselor O'Toole, if you'll turn on your microphone.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I do, I will be making a motion. It's different from the one that's in the agenda, and it was just for clarification, and there seemed to be some concerns with interpretation, so I'm going to try this one. I move the council provide a $25,000 deposit to support the Grand Prairie Fastball Association's bid to host the 2018 Men's National Fastball Championships. And just to speak a little bit on it, if we are unsuccessful, we get the money back, and if we are, it goes towards the costs of the operation. and if we are, it goes towards the costs of the operation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. With this motion, and we don't know if we're going to win it yet, right? But if we do win it, do we need new scoreboards for a hundred thousand dollars or something as well? Maybe administration can answer that.
To administration, Acting Director of Community Living.
Mr. Mayor, not that I'm aware of.
I will say that I recall that in the staff report at the committee meeting, there was noted that improvements would be needed to the score clocks at the East Diamonds, and so that would be something that council would have to consider, should we be successful. Counsel Rice.
I'm confused. My feeling was you had to put this bond up to even apply. If you're successful, you get the money back.
No. If you're successful, you do not get the money back. If you're unsuccessful in winning the bid, if you don't get the event, you get the money back. If you do get the event, the money goes towards the cost of organizing the event.
Okay, so can we have the motion read back, then? Please.
Counsel O'Toole. Yeah, I'll just have to get your microphone. Thank you.
I move the council provide a twenty-five thousand dollar deposit to support the Grand Prairie Fastball Association's bid to host the two thousand eighteen men's national fastball championships.
Thank you very much.
Doesn't say anything about paying back.
Mr. Anderson, do you have a note that the recommended wording came from, I think from your email?
Oh, it wasn't on my email, it was actually to Director Roth. He and I, he and I did discuss it, though. I told him it should be refundable deposit, because the deposit is given for the application. If the application is not successful, it's returned. If it is successful, these events usually generate funds overall, and the expectation would be the fastball association would repay the twenty-five thousand dollars. So, it's really refundable deposit.
That's short and sweet, that's what the email said to me.
You didn't put it in your motion.
And was refundable in the motion?
That administration still understands that if the bid is unsuccessful, the funds are to be paid back to the city. If the bid is successful and makes a profit, the funds will also be paid back to the city.
So, I think the intent was to include the words refundable before deposit, or the word refundable before deposit. Does that meet your intent, Counsel O'Toole? It sounds like in both cases, it would be refunded to the city.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Rice.
I'm wondering if the motion should read that, you know, that as Counselor O'Toole said with the addition, and further that the city enter into a letter of understanding with the group, that if the bid is unsuccessful, the funds will be paid back, and if the bid is successful and makes a profit, the funds will also be paid back to the city. So, it's then done through a letter of understanding.
Mr. Anderson?
Mayor Given, the expectation from staff is that we, if council passes this motion, would be a refundable deposit, and that would be in the letter to the fastball association. Should we get to two thousand eighteen, if they get the games, and they do not recover sufficient funds, then that will be another decision that needs to be made by council on funding the shortfall of the twenty-five thousand.
Counsel O'Toole.
And Mayor Given, this funding source will be from the South Bear Creek operating budget.
I hear Mr. Anderson saying that at this point, the funding source may be different or unidentified. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, there is no funding requirement at this point. It's really a deposit that we expect to get returned, so we expect no cost from it.
So, the decision about where it would be funded from would happen in the case that it is not paid back, essentially that we get the event, that the event does not generate a revenue or a profit, and then council would have to decide how to fund that shortfall and what source to fund it from. I see Mr. Anderson nodding stoically. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just wanted to let you know that there was a discussion at the meeting, and then there's an email, and there's some conflicting information. So, don't look at me as I'm the guy giving you the wrong information.
I appreciate that you're also stepping in for the committee chair. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Good work, Kevin. All right. I will be supporting this motion. I think that one of the reasons for our investment in South Bear Creek Park was to improve the quality of the facilities, so that we could indeed host national competitions that will be and have an economic impact, and will increase the profile of our fair city. So, for me, it's an extension of our investment in the park. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
All right. I move the council direct the mayor to contact the Minister of Transportation to request cost-sharing grants to offset the cost of the low-income transit access program similar to the cities of Calgary and Edmonton.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Open for discussion and debate? Seeing none, oh, Counsel Logan.
Just a quick question as to what communication you've had formally or informally up to this point.
At this point, I haven't had any formal or informal. I was certainly waiting to see whether council was going to give me that direction. It was noted at the committee meeting, though, that Edmonton and Calgary have newly introduced very similar programs to what the city of Grand Prairie has had for a couple of years now, and that they've received substantial grants. And so, I think the committee saw that there were some changes needed to our program, but before doing that direction, the intent was to say we'd at least like equitable treatment with Edmonton and Calgary before changing our program. So, we'll see, certainly the AUMA convention's coming up, that'll be an opportunity to meet the minister face-to-face. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
I got a couple more here, sir. I move the council approve the proposed amendments to the Bilbo's Volunteer Organization of the Year Award and process as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Just to broadly say that this changed some of the timing around nominations in order to ensure that the award could be presented at the same time as a larger corporate recognition of all of our volunteers in the community, so to increase the profile and prestige of the award, there are some timing changes. But in terms of the qualifications required for the award or anything else, everything else is the same. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, all, oh, Counsel Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess both this one and the next one, right? Really speak to a change in recognition for these major awards for the city. We're having a bigger deal volunteer recognition, and we, and the admin is recommending that we combine that with this. And so, I think it'll profile the awards and hopefully get greater interest in submissions for those awards in future. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Radburn. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
I got one more, then I think I'm off the hook. I move the council approve the proposed amendments to the George Repka Outstanding Achievement Award Criteria and Process as Presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? The same applies here in terms of...
Absolutely.
...the larger event. Seeing nobody in the queue, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole, was there anything else you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
I think I had my time tonight, I will pass it on to the next individual. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Move on to item nine point three, Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. Counsel Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held Thursday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, as presented. For those viewers, if there's nobody watching in chambers anymore, this really was a meeting where we talked about the Missaudalman Plan and the multi-family unit requirements.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion is carried. We'll move on to item nine point four, Community Safety Committee meeting from August thirtieth. I'd note that Counselor Thiessen, who was chairing that meeting, wasn't here. I look at the list of who was second on that list, and I would note that it was Counsel O'Toole. Counsel O'Toole.
You know, I thought I had a break. I move the council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held Tuesday, August thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole, and thanks for stepping in. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
Yes. I move the council increase the Engineering Services Contract, RFP dash zero six dash five five two dash one four, previously awarded to ISL Engineering and Land Services for the Hundred and First Avenue Extension and Ninety-Second Street Twinning, and upgrades projects in the previously amended amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars excluding the GST by eighty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents for a new total contract price of five hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents excluding GST.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Open for discussion and debate on the motion. Counsel McLean.
Mayor Given, I guess it directed to Director Racio. I've noticed a few of these over the last few years, where, you know, if I had a contractor to build something, I never added this much money to anything, but I've noticed here with the city with lights and everything, we seem to have a few of these popping up. Are we paying attention to this a little bit more, and how we can look at it through the contracts down the road?
Director Glante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the Hundred and First Avenue project, the delay basically was due to utility relocations. So, when we performed the locates, there were some discrepancies, and more refined work needs to be done, so we are correcting this for the future. And on the second, on the Ninety-Second Avenue Twinning, Second Street, sorry, Twinning project, we perform what is considered best practice in terms of sampling for soil conditions, so drilling cores and taking them to the lab. However, we hid gravel in several locations, but then when the contractor opened the road to perform what is called full-depth reclamation, the gravel amounts were not as expected. So, we had to basically change the methodology and construct this road using a different method. That, you know, meant more consulting time onsite, more inspections, and delays on top of the weather delays. We cannot claim liquidated damages for weather delays. We recovered some funding, ten thousand dollars approximately, as liquidated damages. The cap we have is one thousand five hundred dollars per day that we can recover. Just to give you an idea, Alberta Transportation set that amount for one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars per day, so our cap is a little bit higher, but that is what is considered reasonable for the court, and we can claim. So, we recovered some funding, but of course, the consultant spent more time, and this is the reason of this report. As a lesson learned, yes, we're incorporating some changes and more sampling, a different grade to test the soils in the future projects, so we avoid the situation to happen again.
Thanks, Director Glante. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
I move the council award RFP twenty-one dash five five two dash one six to Helix Engineering Limited in the amount of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifteen cents exclusive of GST as the highest evaluated proponent.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on this motion?
And just to follow up, it's on sidewalks and trails program, and it's a two-year engineering consultant services contract.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Counsel O'Toole, anything else to highlight from that meeting?
No, thank you, sir.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. That'll take us to, I don't know, number ten, correspondence, which we have none. Number eleven was delegation business. Certainly, the delegations that were here with respect to Bear Creek Folk Music Festival, I believe the issue they were addressing has been dealt with. There was the one presentation for Mr. Dorshide, and perhaps we could have a motion to receive that presentation for information. Counsel Rice.
I move that we receive Mr. Dorshide's presentation for information, and I believe that advising him of the referral of the item to next week's Community Safety Committee should be able to answer all of his questions at that time.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We go to item number twelve, notice of motion, and we have one notice of motion, that item twelve point one contained in council's agenda package. It's a notice of motion declaring the intent on Counsel McLean's behalf. Counsel McLean, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I hereby give notice of the city council meeting scheduled for Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. I will introduce the following motion. Council, refer the WCB rebate funds to the fall budget deliberations.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. So, our process is that a council member has to submit a notice of motion in writing to a council meeting like this, for it to come up at a subsequent council meeting, and so Counsel McLean has done that, and it will appear then on our next agenda. We will move on from notice of motion to council member reports. Counsel O'Toole, I think you asked for it, and said that you wanted to provide an update with Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum. Nobody to blame but yourself this time.
Okay, as of this Friday night, September ninth, there will be the first year anniversary, the Amber Ball, and it'll be held out at the Tech Center and Trek Center. And also, what's going on right now is a lottery for a Audi Q3 car that will be drawn that particular night. So, if you're looking for tickets, you can just look up Dino Museum on the internet and find your tickets there, and they'll be mailed to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick response to Counsel O'Toole. Are you going to be there that night for the draw?
Yes, I will. And no, I'm not driving the car home for you, sir.
Okay. Thanks very much, council members. Considering there's only been one council member that's won a car during this term or a vehicle during this term.
Two cars.
We will, I don't believe there are any other external agencies or committees to make reports on, so we'll go to council member roundtable, and I'll start with, to my left, with Counsel Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just do one. Let's see, the time is moving on. I did want to mention to my colleagues that I did bring greetings and welcoming from council, mayor and council, to the First Nations Matee Storytelling Event that was hosted by the Grand Prairie Museum. It's an event that was a start of something that will grow. Our new curator there, Charles, I believe, it was his initiation, and they had a good turnout of storytellers, and they're being recorded and will become part of the museum in future. But I just want to recognize that we're integrating our First Nations people to a greater extent in our museum. Thank you.
Counsel Radburn. Counsel O'Toole.
Yes, thanks very much, Mayor Given. I attended a lot of things in the last couple of weeks, but I do want to speak on one that was another national event held in Grand Prairie. It's the Wapiti Shooters Club, held the National Sporting Clay Championships. There was individuals from as far away as New Brunswick. I think they knew Kevin McLean, I'm not sure. And I can tell you that they knew of him. And also, huge consistent contingency from Ontario, Manitoba, Saskatchewan, British Columbia, and there was over a hundred shooters. And I'm going to tell you, a lot of them stayed in hotels, but there was a lot that brought their wives and children, and they stayed at the facility, but they did spend a lot of time in town, going to some of the businesses and recreational facilities, including the art gallery and the Eastlake Center. So, thank you very much. And I did give greetings on behalf of the council there, so...
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Counsel Rice, if you'll turn your microphone on. on.
I had the honor of attending the Alvera Grotkowski Park dedication, and I realize, and the mayor spoke extremely well, as he always does, but at the risk of knowing that she may never speak to me again, did come up at that event that in the long years she was a teacher, she only strapped one student. That would be a young fellow by the name of Dwight Logan. I also want to commend our staff, Michelle Gardner, and remind council of what I think is a really exciting event coming up on Friday at 9:45 a.m. That's Friday, September 9. It will be the apple harvest day. As part of our policy on edible gardens, the school will be going, and the students will be harvesting the apples. They'll learn about when you harvest the apples, what you do with them, and taking them back to the school. So, that will take place at the Mike Fedina Park on Friday at 9:45 a.m. And I, I just think it's a really unique event and something that certainly ties together, you know, council's direction on edible gardens.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I hope Counselor Edmond's making apple pie then from the apples. I'm going to do a time, not have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Logan?
There, I think that's got it. It was a fairly quiet week, a couple of weeks. Did attend a workshop on planning on South Bear Creek with a lot of other members of council, and that was very interesting. And I chaired a Development Appeal Board hearing. That's a job that I've always really enjoyed doing, going back decades, unfortunately. And I have to say that the community members that I've worked with in this term have been head and shoulders above any of the ones in the past that truly committed to doing their homework, making sure that they're up on it. And I just wanted to let council know that that's the kind of quality that we're having from the volunteers for the DABs.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor Clayton?
Just two things I wanted to mention. Was happy to attend a council committee, the whole, with the Urban Develop Institution of Alberta. Local developers and council sat down to talk through possibilities and continue to make changes to benefit both the developers and the future growth of our city. So, I thought that was a really constructive meeting. As well, a couple of other things. I'll leave one to the mayor in regards to something at the airport that was very special, but I did want to say that myself is among some other counselors, and the mayor attended the sod turning and site blessing for the new St. John Paul II Junior/Senior High School located in Arbor Hills. That was great turnout, really special day, and continues to grow our city in different directions. And thank you to, for the school district to put that on. And at that celebration, they also thanked developer Henry Hamm, who was instrumental in the timing of this school for the budgeting of the province to get this school built on time. So, that was a nice special dedication. And that's it.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. So, in respect of time, I'll just identify events on one day. Counselor Clayton mentioned that on Monday, the 29th, we had a sod turning for the Catholic school. Later that day, we had a sculpture unveiling at the airport, and want to thank the community of Chetwind for their donation of a chainsaw sculpture of a swan that will grace the front of the Grand Prairie Regional Airport. Certainly appreciate that connection to the larger region that the airport serves, and I think it's a smart marketing move, frankly, on behalf of Chetwind to identify that. If you ever get a chance, great place to eat in Chetwind is the Red Lion Inn. And finally, I, later that day, had an opportunity to attend the dedication of a park. It was another one of our 100th Anniversary Parks, named in recognition of Angie Krier, one of our well-known representatives of our First Nations and Métis communities. She, as you can imagine, had a significant turnout for the dedication of her park, and she is the only person, well, not necessarily the only person, but it didn't surprise me at all that Angie, A, ensured that the members of council that were there knew that she would be coming to see us to ask for something in the future, as the Métis Association is working on some new projects. Angie never lets an opportunity go by to advocate in the community, on behalf of her community. And then also, you wouldn't be surprised to know that she also had a gift for me at the naming of her park. And so she just provided a little gift to say thank you for attending, but I think it sort of demonstrates the character of Angie and the way she approaches her work in the community. So, Monday, the 29th, was a completely ceremonial day with a sod turning, a sculpture unveiling, and a park dedication. I want to thank the members of council that were there, and, yeah, just recognize that it really, truly was a good day. With that, I'll call our meeting adjourned.